Good evening and welcome to the October 19th, 2021 Town of Foxborough School Committee Meeting. As we do with all of our meetings, we do want to open with open public comment before we open it up to the members, to our community members here in the gallery. I do want to acknowledge that we received two inbox submissions since our last meeting. The first came from James Bauer, 35 Independence Drive. Sorry. And the second came from Wendy Cohen, 26 Mitchell Drive. Thank you both for your submissions to the inbox. Moving on with the open public comments section of the meeting, as always, we've asked you to sign in if you intend to participate in the open public comment section. We are asking anyone who wants to participate to limit their comments to three minutes in time this evening because we do have a very full agenda. Also, as always, I will acknowledge that the committee members are here to listen. We try to remain impartial and neutral as we listen. I would also ask that anyone in the gallery also maintain neutrality and respect for all the other members of the gallery. If you do need to have a conversation about something that is either pertaining to what's happening in the school committee meeting or something outside of that, we ask you to move to the hallway. Okay? Thank you. So, the first, the first community member on the list is Julie Curry from Cross Street.
First, I'd like to thank you for changing the wording regarding the mask policy and the student update. It's a small change, but one that I appreciate. I know it now reads that we understand the mask policy instead of forcing people to agree with the policy. So, thank you for amending that. Next, I'd like to speak about the current COVID cases going around Taylor School. Clearly, masks are ineffective as multiple kids have contracted COVID from the same classroom. I have not spoken to all of these families, but I do know many of them, and majority of these kids have no symptoms. Do you realize if we stop testing everyone and isolating children, kids would be acquiring antibodies and natural immunity? We could reach herd immunity much faster and move on with life. Natural immunity has been scientifically proven to be more beneficial and long-lasting than vaccine immunity. The vaccine is actually trying to mimic what natural immunity does for us. And if we would just let the kids live life, they would develop their natural immunity really fast, especially since all of these kids are walking around asymptomatic. Seems like every day they're testing more kids, and more kids are positive, but they're okay. I was absolutely shocked when a friend of mine told me that her son, who tested negative, had to stay home for 20 days because her daughter was positive. Her daughter's not sick, but she had to be tested as being a close contact at school, and it came back positive. Her brother now has to be out of school for being a close contact, even though he's negative. The test and stay policy does not apply to kids who have a positive case at home, and the boy's 10-day quarantine doesn't start until his sister's 10 days is over. So here we have a healthy kid who's missing school for 20 days with no, nothing sent home, no instruction, nothing. This kid is healthy and bored out of his mind for 20 days, and he has a negative test. That's 10% of the school year that he's missing for no reason. Why are healthy kids missing school? Doesn't make any sense to me. If he gets COVID, he can actually return to school sooner, so his mom is now hoping that he gets COVID because a positive COVID kid can go back to school quicker than a negative close-contact sibling. Masks clearly aren't doing the trick because this virus is somehow still spreading. It is not your job, or the government's job, to mandate and dictate health restrictions on us or our children. We simply want to be given a choice in the matter. If people feel strongly about wearing masks, by all means, let them, but it should not be forced upon everybody. These mandates have gone on for too long with no end in sight, and the mandates clearly aren't working, so it's time to try something different. I urge you to take a look at the private schools in Massachusetts or the public schools down south that have no mask mandates. There is no increase in transmission and no increase in cases. The students are thriving. Ben Franklin says, "Any society that will give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both." So it's time to give us back our liberties. Thank you.
Next, Joe Pyrez, South Grove, yeah, South Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also here about the mask mandate and just had some questions and comments, I think, about the testing that the school is doing. Received an email from our principal, Mr. Stanton, which I know is here in the audience. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Stanton for being pretty transparent. I think your communication has been great about this and about just other things in general, so I'd just like to say thank you to him for that. I'd like to start off first by, I guess, asking, and I don't know this, and I would hope you can answer this right now, students who have to get tested or the stay, you know, what's it called, the stay?
Test and stay.
Test and stay. What kind of test is that? Is it a PCR or is it a rapid test? Just out of curiosity. This isn't a gotcha question either.
It's binax now.
Is that a rapid test? Okay. Just curious. The, you know, it's hard, so the rapid tests, we all know, create a lot of false positives. That's been since day one, when all the pharmacies were giving out rapid tests. Everybody else wanted a PCR test. You went and got a rapid test, but it didn't really mean anything because it was, it was so high in false positives. So you had to get the PCR test. The PCR test, according to the, to the person who invented the PCR test, said that it was never designed to diagnose illness. That was Dr. Mullis. I think he's since passed away. I know there's some controversy about that. Did he actually say that? His quote is, "PCR is just a process that allows you to make a whole lot of something out of something." And it doesn't tell you that you are sick, or that, or that the thing that you ended up with is going to hurt you, or anything like that. That was his statement. So even the PCR test is something that we all kind of hold as the gold standard, and it's really not. There's still a lot of false positives and a lot of people who are testing positive who aren't sick. I'd also like to find out from your testing agency what the cycle threshold is for this test that you guys are running. I don't know if the rapid test goes through, what the cycle threshold is, but there's, there's plenty of very smart people, including Anthony Fauci, again, who people hold as the Messiah, that he says that, you know, I think we're running cycles around 40. And he is quoted saying that anything over 35 cycles almost is never cultureable. And that's on record. That's a video that he is saying that. So I'm just curious about the testing that you guys are providing to our students. What kind of test is it? How many cycle thresholds are we going? You should be able to find that out. I'm sure that there's a large contract for that. The other thing is, speaking of that, the contract, I would like to know how much we're spending on this company that we've hired to do all this test and stay. So zero, so it's all money from the state? So the state's paying for it? So indirectly through taxes or whatever, it's getting paid? Got it? Okay. Secondly, asymptomatic spread. A lot of kids are being diagnosed as positives. The WHO, World Health Organization, and I quote, says, from a Dr. Van Kirkhoff, who's the head of the Emerging Diseases at the WHO, says, "From the data we have, it still seems to be rare that an asymptomatic person actually transmit onward to a secondary individual." So it's very rare that an asymptomatic person would transmit this disease to somebody else. So we have a lot of kids, they're testing, they're positive, they're not going to school, you're kind of disrupting everybody's life, and we're, you know, I guess I'm just here to give you a little bit of knowledge on that. Secondly-
Mr. Pyrez?
Yep.
It has been five minutes.
It's been five minutes? Okay. There's a lot of information here that I think parents should go through. I think parents need to start digging a little bit deeper into, you know, the, what's out there for information and not just get their information from, you know, the nightly news or, you know, whatever variety cable station you're listening to. You got to read reports, you need to read medical journals, and look back at history to see. And I hope that this board here takes this all into consideration when you do your next vote on whether or not children should be wearing masks in school-
Thank you.
-that show no proof of working.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Pyrez? If you would like, we do like to have any written commentary that people use in the public comment, please give it to Ms. Grosterson so she can include it in the meeting minutes for this, for this evening's meeting. Ms. Curry, did you, did you want to include yours as well? Did you?
I did.
Yeah, I have that one. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did this get scanned and like uploaded onto the town website? Or- It would become a part of the meeting minutes. So yes, when we make the packet available.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on with our next agenda item, which is the approval of meeting minutes from our October 5th meeting. Any questions or comments on our edits to those meeting minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, I should do one thing, and I completely forgot.
I was just about to say at the meeting.
Can I look over and I expect to see Brent? Brent's not here tonight. So we want to welcome one of our student representatives to the school committee meeting tonight. My sincerest apologies, Grace. This is Grace Baloo. She is joining us. She is class of 2025, correct? So, welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself to everybody so we can know a little bit more about you?
Okay, so, hi, I'm Grace. I'm in ninth grade, and I don't know what else.
Is that a contest to see where students at some point to be in the school committee? So, we are really excited to have you with us. There is another student representative who was not able to join us this evening, Jacob, but he hopefully will be able to join us at our next meeting on November 2nd. So, we are thrilled to have, to have you back, or have a student back, and we're thrilled that it's you. So thank you very much. Now, on to the, on to the meeting minutes from the October 5th meeting. Were there any questions, comments, or edits to those minutes, please?
No.
No. So, hearing no questions, comments, or edits, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting, please.
My second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. So three, Brent's not here, and I have to, I wasn't, I wasn't part of the meeting, so three, zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our teaching and learning highlight, Dr. Verto, or Dr. Mello. Can I turn it over to one of you for the introduction?
Sure.
Turn it over to Dr. Mello.
All right. We are so excited to welcome tonight some of our fabulous educators representing the Barrow, the Taylor School. We did have someone from the Igoe School, formerly Ms. Samantha Walsh, now Mrs. Samantha Kudell, who could not make it, and our curriculum director of Math and Science, Noel Hendrickson. I'd love to invite you up to the table, and you can talk to us about how you've been collaborating to promote student success. So we have, well, I'll let you introduce.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Noel Hendrickson. I'm the K-8 Math/Science Curriculum Director, and why don't I let you introduce?
Hello, everyone. Jennifer Powers, the Mass Specialist at Taylor School.
Alicia Shiam, Literacy Specialist at the Barrow School.
And Don Doyle, I teach first grade at the Barrow.
Great, welcome. So we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about, we just came off of a fresh round of data meetings at the elementary school level. All three elementary schools and every single grade level within those elementary schools just came off of our fall data meetings. This is sort of an arm of the MTSS, which I know Dr. Mello talked about a little bit later, but we were so sort of, I say lucky, because we were given the time, the time to sit and look at student performance data, which we know time is the greatest gift that we can give our teachers. And so when, so when we sat down and looked at data, the first thing I said was, you know, we, we assess kids to instruct them, but we need to actually back that up with now what? Now what are we going to do with this performance data? What is that going to look like? Because we are so data-rich in Foxborough, we have so much data that we collect, now what? What is the next step? Because it doesn't just stop, right? The assessment isn't the end goal. Now what? So we sat down with all of our teachers, and we got to take a look at data, and we got to actually ask the central question that framed the work, which is, what do you need for us to create a data-rich culture? And we had our teachers participate in a Wordle, which they did, and they, as you know, it populates an answer, and the largest word is what is populated the most. And so time came out, and collaboration, and fidelity, and put students first, and lack of judgment, and those kinds of things, which really just framed these really great discussions that we had with teachers. So we took them through a seven-step protocol in each of the buildings and each of the grade levels, and I'm going to let some of the teachers talk a little bit about what those seven steps sort of looked like as they participated in the meetings.
Yes, please slide myself in. So we began our meetings with, we spent some time just individually examining our own data. We had a little bit of time for some private reflection with our own information, either digitally, or some of us used hard copies, and we were able to sort of look at, look at the data and sort of glean, you know, what kinds of information does this tell us about individual students, but also about patterns that we noticed throughout our classrooms? So for example, as a first-grade teacher, we made it, we, we spent some time looking at assessments that were about reading, reading simple words or sight words, and then some assessments around foundations, our phonics program, and then our writing assessment, and then also our annual beginning-of-the-year math benchmark. And we just made some notes about, you know, what do students know about letters? What do students know about writing? And then we were able to come back together as a group, so we, you know, as first-grade colleagues, and, and share our observations, and then spend some time noticing if there were common patterns between what I was noticing in my classroom and what my colleagues were each noticing in their own classrooms. And then we returned to that sort of quiet reflection and note-taking to think a little bit about what that data tells us, but then also spend some time thinking about what, sort of, what the data also does not tell us. And it was a great opportunity for us to think about, you know, what, what do we know about our kids sort of globally? Because I think that, especially coming off of, you know, some, some strange learning experiences over the past year and a half for all of our kids, sort of looking at what, what, what do we see about our kids, but then also, you know, what, what do we need to work on, obviously? But then also, what do we see that's happening that's positive? And what might the data indicate for us? You know, what can kids do? So perhaps they've not arrived at the correct answer, but they're able to display lots of information that they, they do understand about the content. And it was really valuable to spend time looking at that, you know, as a teacher, but then also share those conclusions with my colleagues. And then finally, we spent some time thinking about what kinds of celebrations we had, because again, with coming off of such a strange experience for, you know, sort of the COVID experience of learning, I think that we tend to have a deficit mindset, and I think that spending this time with this data really allowed us to step back and say, what is there to celebrate? Because there is a lot to celebrate for our kids. I mean, we all, you know, as first-grade teachers, we said, you know, it was, what, the third week of school, and we handed them all pieces of paper, and they all wrote, they all wrote something, which is really amazing. So it was, it was overall a really valuable experience to, to have that beginning piece of, of the data collection and the, the community collaboration with my colleagues.
I so appreciate you doing that without your slide, Mrs. Doyle. You did a fabulous job.
Well, our slides would have helped us a little bit.
Yeah, your slides have helped you a little bit.
There's the example of the Wordle.
You described the Wordle beautifully, though.
There's the Wordle that I was talking about, but we did that for each individual grade level, and we will revisit this Wordle again with them when we do the second round of data meetings, just to kind of talk about this framework and the norms that we have around the work that we're doing. And then if you see, these were the steps that we literally took teachers through, and I had mentioned there were seven steps. And Don just talked about step one with our four pieces of data. She talked about step two as well. So you can advance that. What does the data tell us? What does it not tell us? And then she also talked about step three, which was a great one. And then I will have the specialists talk about the next step.
Sure. So we then, you can advance to step four. After we celebrated all the good that we could find in all of those assessments, those four assessments, we really said, okay, so where are the areas of concern? And it, you know, for ELA, we saw a few trends, a few things. It was kind of like, now that we know what we know, where, we got to dig a little more and see what we need to do with that data. So in the area of ELA, we saw some trends at the K-2 level with phonemic awareness, which is that little piece of like, it's like a phonological umbrella, there's a little piece, phonemic awareness, the ability to be able to manipulate sounds auditorily. There was a little need for that in the K-2, so we decided to put some little routines in to, you know, and it's not, not all students need that, so that's more of a small group type assessment, assessment instruction for those students who need it the most. It might be blending, segmenting, deleting sounds, but it's all auditorily. We also saw, one of the areas of concern was with narrative text structure. While we were celebrating that all kids wrote, and they wrote right away, they had great sentence structure, they weren't as comfortable with that narrative text structure that we really wanted them to, so we really worked in PLCs, which was the next step after this data meeting, to set up mentor texts at each level, just so students would have more models, and worked on small group writing for the students, just so they had more mentor texts and more. I think that's about it for me, Jen.
So as Alicia mentioned, this was the part of the data meetings that we did some problem solving and planning, and we were really fortunate as specialists to see all these grade levels. We were with first through fourth grade, and in that lens, we were able to notice a few things across grade levels, where we were noticing and speaking to each other that there are a few areas that we wanted to really take a look at a little deeper. And one of them, in the area of math, is still basic facts, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. We talked across the grade level and make sure that the teachers were still doing whole-class instruction on strategies with concrete tools and moving into visual models, and then from there, being sure that kids can know from memory those facts, because it affects all other areas of problem solving. And given that, another big one that we did see, and we're really lucky to have the literacy specialist at the table, is word problems and story problems. So we noticed a few areas of concern there, not across everything and everywhere, but through those discussions and those meetings, we were able to really talk about how we need to use the literacy instruction of close reading strategies in the area of math. So we need to be sure the kids are visualizing what's happening in a story, and just a basic word problem, but really thinking about what's happening, make sure they comprehend it before they go ahead and solve anything. That was a really big piece, and nice to have everybody at the same table to do that. Those are just a couple of the examples that we were able to see as a team, how we can use that data to help plan for whole-class instructions and also some small group, which we're going to talk about a little bit more next.
Okay, can you please just advance? They talked about that, and so six and seven were really about the individual students, right? Who needs that Tier Two instruction? Where do we need to pull groups of, of individual students with like needs? And so that happened at this data meeting. It was awesome because everybody was around the table, everybody, we had the math specialist, the reading specialist, the teachers, the special educators, everybody was there to sort of wrap around services for students that needed it. And then also, just thinking about what it looked like during the day, our last step was sort of during math workshop and during reading workshop. What are my groups going to be as a teacher? And I'm going to sit and collaborate with my specialists so that I know who I'm pulling, not only for remediation, but also for enrichment. We had a lot of students who were scoring really well on our performance benchmarks that we wanted to make sure that we were giving enrichment to as well, and that's part of this, this conversation. So we were so lucky to have everybody at the table for our fall data meetings. We look forward to doing them again in the winter, and then again in the spring, and we'll follow these seven-step protocols again. It worked out really well. I think the teachers came together and felt really supported around what comes next, which is always that question. So we have all this great data, now what? Well, that's the now what. So it was a really great experience. So thank you guys for, for your time tonight.
I'd just like to say that I got to join many of the data meetings, and it was really, I think it was exciting because we had so much work that we did over the summer with our MTSS group, and I am going to talk more about that this evening, but to watch you hit the ground running with real-time data that's relevant to the students who are sitting in front of you at this time, and how we can work from their strengths, as you said, Mrs. Doyle, what can they do, and what do they need to do next? And it's not the same for every child, so our small group structures really served that really, really well. And I appreciate the fact that you had all the different voices at the table, all working in service of our students. And it was really a high-energy sort of experience. People seemed to leave inspired and prepared and ready to take on the challenges of having different levels of students in their classes. So I appreciate the fact that I got to join you as well.
We were glad to have you. It was really fun. So thank you.
I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Canfield.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Before you leave, any questions or comments from the committee? Grace, you're welcome to join in questions and comments if you'd like.
Well, I would just first thank you for taking the time. I think we know now in, in the advantage in education is that we have this opportunity for data, which I think is really crystal clear, and, and I think it's really good to have you present here to the public so that the public can hear it as well, too. So that, that's really one of the key pieces of this. Besides us learning for you, we should hear the public here, and actually, your enthusiasm, your validity of it, too. But I, what rang true to me is what you said, your Wordle is your Wordle, time and collaboration. And we all know in education, that's going to come up quick. So first of all, thanks for taking the time. Thanks for affording the time in, in our design of our schedule, right, for our teachers. That's really very, very positive. But I just think it's really key for everyone to hear that, that it's taking the time and the collaboration to add this deeper discussion about data and to add informed decision-making. One of the things that I think can happen in education, I guess this is my opinion, is that it can get siloed sometimes in, in education. We have our classrooms, and we do feel alone with this group or that group or whatever it is. And I think a great advantage that the public needs to understand is when these moments happen, they, they supply great energy and, and direction. It funnels focus and intent, because that's what teachers want to do. They want to, they want to sit before their students and say, this is where I think you're going, I, this is where I believe I see, this is what I think I can do, and this is how I'm being informed to make it happen. And that's what teachers want to do. So I, I, I just say what I think I know, but I think it's great for our community and our public to hear that we're doing this, because this is how we bring change, and we bring methodical decision-making to how we take them to the next step vertically.
Yeah.
So I just thank you for all that. I guess that's my commentary. But thank you. I think it's really important for us to hear that.
Well, just to your point, Richard, too, just so that I can tell you, I picked one Wordle out of, I think I had 12 meetings, and they were all a little different, but time and collaboration by far were the two largest words in every single Wordle. I could have picked any one, and those would be the two biggest ones. So you hit on that. So yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So my question is, how many times did fidelity show up? Because just the fact that it showed up once is quite impressive to me.
Fidelity came up quite a bit, common assessments, you know, always putting students first. Those were trends. The, the verbiage or language could have shifted a tiny bit, but really, the elements of what these meetings were and what they were about came from teachers.
Right.
I mean, I wasn't typing anything in there.
Right.
They all were.
No, I think it's a perfect word, and we probably don't use enough.
Yes.
So the fact that it showed up on the example that you shared with us tonight, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Michelle? Grace? Sorry.
No, thank you very much.
I keep, I gotta look both ways, so, no?
No, I would say thank you. I really enjoyed the, the presentation. It's nice to be able to kind of get that insight into what really is kind of going on in the schools and the teachers and from those perspectives. So thank you very much.
Last thing I will say is that it's so unique to be in, in my position where I get to see it at all the elementary schools, and what I will say is, there's so much that's common around the work that we do, but there's such a different spirit in each of the buildings, and that was what was so inspiring for me, was it never felt the same anywhere I went, but it, we also had that same commonality of what we felt was important. So I just want to put that out there, because that's what really makes, I think, the elementary schools in Foxborough so amazing, is that they're very unique places, but we all have the same sort of vision and alignment in our values and what we hold true. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you so much. I had a question, which, which is, next time around, are you planning on doing anything different? I know you have to be careful with what, with, you know, with what elements you change, but are you planning on doing anything different based on your experience with this round?
That was a really good question. I don't want to change the protocol, because I feel like that was, that worked really well for us. We loved the silent note-taking and then the sharing out what you saw on screen, but what will look different are the assessments that we put in front of our teachers, because[1725.91] that we put in front of our teachers, because I will say, there were three reading assessments and one math assessment, and that was on purpose. We are really elevating ELA right now, and that's where we're seeing that we're needing more common assessments. But by mid year, we're going to have a lot of math in our pocket to take a look at. Just, we only took a look at one in the fall, and we have a lot to take a look at in the middle of the year. So, that will look different.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And then my last comment is, I love that you guys are so excited about this, because it's palpable, that's a word I use a lot, not fidelity as much as I should, but palpable is the word I do use. It is palpable, the energy, sorry, that you guys are sharing with us, not just around what you're talking about on the slides, but what you're sharing with us in your stories. So, thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Rob.
Can I just add one more thing, Mr. Canfield? Mrs. Hendrickson, other half, the ELA Social Studies Title I Curriculum Director, she couldn't be here this evening, but she was a big part in planning these meetings and leading these meetings and bringing her expertise to the table. So, I just want to mention her, Karen McKinnon, that she was...
I learned a lot from those meetings about ELA that I really needed to know. And I mean that. Like, I was hanging on every word she was saying. It was really powerful to have her in the room, obviously, and like, we did it together, and she was a big part of it as well. Because it was ELA-heavy data, I appreciated her perspective so much. It was incredible.
Well, thank you. And thank you in absentia, Karen.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Bertos is the superintendent's update.
All right. It's a little bit shorter this evening. I'll start as I have in the past with the COVID update. We currently, as far as Norfolk County, we continue to be at equaling high as far as risk of transmission. It's a 1.8% positivity rate. When we look at the schools, it was mentioned before, as far as some of the numbers increasing, we have seen an increase in numbers in our schools. So, as you know, on our main webpage, we put weekly by Wednesday, it's updated our number of cases. And so, as of 10:13, last Wednesday, there were 12 current active cases. That will be updated tomorrow. There will be an increase. We've seen an increase particularly at the Taylor and at the IGO. You have a number of students that are going to be coming off of active cases and others that are there. But you're definitely going to see an uptick, as we have seen that. In regards to the quarantining and all of the protocols and scenarios, a lot of it was mentioned during public comment. I will just say that we are under very strict guidance of what we have to follow as far as all of those protocols. We're not the ones who make up how long a quarantine period is. We're not the one who makes up who's a close contact and who then becomes tested. We're following all of those protocols that are through public health officials that have the expertise in that area. That's not our area of expertise. Our area of expertise is education. So, we're following what we have to as a public school district. So, when it talks about the number of days for student quarantining, or all of the different scenarios, they're all on our website as well. You can look at those and see those, but we're not making those up. That is something that we have to follow. The nurses have done an outstanding job. The principals have done so much in addition to what they do on a normal day with contact tracing as well. So, I really applaud the efforts. We have all of our principals here this evening. It is a seven-day-a-week job. It always has been, let's be honest, but with the contact tracing and all of the phone calls, and then, as you can imagine, when we have substitute teachers that are there, it's hard to find subs. A lot of districts are really having difficulty. So, there's so much work that goes on in addition to just the quarantining and the absences. And I just really want to say publicly, thank you to our principals and to our nurses. They truly have done an outstanding job with this. And it's not over, and it's not going to be over anytime soon, because we have to follow all of those protocols and guidelines that are set out for us by the state. And I have to attest to the Department of Education that we are following all of those guidelines as well. So, as far as our vaccination rates, we're not at the 80%, which is the question mark. We know at this point in time, November 1st is the date that the commissioner has with the DESI mandate for masks. We fully expect, we don't know, but we fully expect to see that pushed out past November 1st, based on the rising numbers and the transmission that's taking place. At the high school right now, which is where you could have that figure, we are at 72.9%. So, we're not at that 80%. We were at 71% the last time I gave the update.
Does that combine students and staff?
That combines. It has to be all staff and students. And it's not just teachers. It's every staff member in a building. So, it's staff, students combined in order to get to the 80%. And so, right now, we're at 72.9%. So, that's the COVID part of the update. I'd like to say that this is, this week is National School Bus Safety Week. And so, I have this awesome picture here to share. This is Dennis Fletcher, our current transportation manager, and John McClellan, who's going to be assuming when Dennis retires next month. But this is just a picture with our two school resource officers, Officer Frank Azavito and Officer Meg Allen, and just the partnership that we have with them. They've been following some of our buses, because we know we have cameras on buses to be able to look at traffic flow and to watch any cars that are going to bypass when a school bus is stopped. So, if you see any cruisers following, that's what that's about. At the same time, it's a good time to stop and let this serve as a reminder to students and to parents and to drivers and anyone in the community, quite honestly, that this is the extension of our classroom. And so, we need to make sure we get our students here safe. We're transporting, you know, 1,800 students a day, and we want to have them arrive safely and get home safely. So, again, it's National School Bus Safety Week, so I just wanted to make that comment, and then also do a shout-out to our bus drivers. I mean, if you think about it, driving a school bus full of a number of students, that is not an easy job. And managing behaviors, you can't do that when you're driving a bus. So, it's so important for our students to understand that the school bus is an extension of the classroom, and that the safety is there, because we need to keep the students safe, so the drivers can focus on driving the bus. This is not necessarily an update, but I just wanted to make a comment. Yesterday, all of the principals, myself, our team chairs, our nurses, our school adjustment counselors, guidance, we had our annual meeting with all of our community partners. And that takes place at the beginning of the school year. We weren't able to do it last year because of COVID. But I mention it because it just, it just really reinforces how much of a fortunate community that we are with the partnership. So, as an example, Mark Craig, who's the director of Foxborough Human Services, and he's at the Senior Center, he's there. We had Pam McGuire, who's the town social worker, as well as with Christina LaRose, who's another one of the town social workers, representation from the discretionary fund, from the food pantry, from emergency services, Deputy Chief Tom Kenman was there. And it just really shows all of the wraparound services that are here for our families, from really young to really experienced. And I just wanted to do a shout-out to thank them for that constant being right there when we need them. You know, if it's something with families, going to our guidance counselors, and being able to know who can we call and who can we reach out to. So, it's just, Foxborough's a very, it's the gem of Norfolk County, but it's just, it's a wonderful place to be with all of the supports that we have in place for our families. So, I did just want to mention that.
Dr. Bertos, may I interrupt you a moment? Gentlemen, again, I'd like to remind people in the gallery, if you do want to have a conversation, we ask that you step outside of the room. We are trying to conduct a business meeting here. So, thank you for your cooperation. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you. The other update that I want to mention is really, it's going to be communication that in, it's for the high school, and it's something that, it's not something that I want to share, but I need to share. And that is at our varsity football games. And that is the behavior that we've been seeing from students that are not necessarily high school students, middle school students, and elementary students. It's not the pride and the behaviors of our expectations. And we know in the past, we've had students that have been dropped off by families, middle school students, and even some upper elementary students that are unattended by parents or guardians. And what we've been seeing at the football games, I've seen it myself at the last several home games, is that the behavior does not reflect our values in Foxborough. And we need parents' help to speak with their children about the behaviors, because we want it to be a positive experience. Our team is there, our cheerleaders are there, our marching band is there. And it's a community, but it's an extension of the school, and we have other communities that are coming in. And so, we have been getting some complaints from other school districts based on the behavior of our fans. So, we're going to have middle school administration at our next home game. High school administration is always there, along with our Foxborough Police Department, to help us with this. And it's rude comments that are being said, it's some vulgar language that's being used. I'm just going to say what it is. And it is not the behavior that will be tolerated at the games. I don't want for us to be at a place, like some communities, where they're not having any students that are unattended by parents or guardians. We don't want to get there. We believe our students can do better and represent the warrior way. I will send out a communication ahead of the next home football game on the 28th, but I just mention it here, because I think that if for anybody that's listening, they may not be aware of this. So, please talk with your children about behavior that's taking place at the game, because we want to be proud and have our fans proud of being in Foxborough. And that's not what we've been seeing at the last several home games. Other updates really are, we have a lot of things to be proud of, a lot of athletics going on with all of our sports teams, mini-games to go and watch, the last teaching and learning highlight, the Strings Concert and Chorus that's coming up on October 28th, Thursday at the High School Auditorium, the Voices in Strings Concert, if you remember, in addition to all of the fall sports that are going on. And then, at the next school committee meeting, you'll have a little bit of a teaser for our High School Musical that will be taking place at the beginning of November, November 12th, actually, with the spelling bee. And that really is about it as far as updates. So, lots to look forward to.
Thank you. Questions? Grace?
Actually, I would just like to make a comment about the football program. I can't stress it as any more than what you've just said. It's our parents, and we should all get behind this. This is the third-ranked team in the state of Massachusetts right now out of a division of 36 teams. So, we should be very proud of this team. I'm pretty confident they're going to go on to the state tournament, because I know how the power rankings work. So, if they keep playing and excelling, we want to show what we are as a community. So, I think we need everyone behind us on this. Sports gives us that great opportunity to show who we are, how we think, and what we're about. And so, we have a perfect time to show excellence, because we're there. We're there. We can shine with it. So, I hope everyone hears that message, because this is a good football team and a good football program. I'm not slighting any of the sports teams, but you brought the football games up in direction. So, I hope we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I did have one question back to the COVID update. I know November 1st is when the current mandate is scheduled to expire. Do we have any indication around when they're going to make the next opinion made?
We had a conference call with the commissioner a week ago, and at that time, it's going to be prior to November 1st. So, we're expecting anything within the next, say, week and a half to get some kind of an update, to see if that's going to be extended or not. So, again, we never know exactly when that's going to come out, but hopefully in the next week and a half.
And I hesitate to ask the question, but I'm just compelled. Do we know of any high schools in the state that have met that 80% in the community?
Yes. I've recently learned that there are four districts in the state that have met that. I think the closest one is probably Hopkinton.
Right.
Two of us.
So, I know it's Hopkinton and Ashland. And what were the others? Do you know what the others, the other two were?
I'm not sure. I know that as far as the surrounding districts around us, because I'm, you know, in close contact with all the superintendents, they're not at the 80%. None of them are those that are directly surrounding us.
Thank you.
And not close either.
Right.
Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the update, or we appreciate update. Next on the agenda is the first reading of two policies. One is for the, is the policy EEA, the Student Transportation Policy Update, and then the second policy is EBCFA for the face masks. Before we begin the discussion of the, or before we begin the first readings of these two policies, I would like to open for discussion to the committee, the fact that, one, I have an email from Brent, who was not able to join us, but was able to read the policies and was able to read comment from our outside council. But I'm also proposing that, based on the commentary that we received back from outside council, either last night or this morning, that are pretty drastic revisions to what we were planning on reading tonight, and the fact that I actually do think that because of the importance of these policies, and the fact that Brent is not able to join us tonight, I want to consider, should we defer the first reading of these policies and the discussion on those edits until we've had a chance to take outside council's remarks back into our account and see if we want to make any adjustments. And I also want Brent to be a part of the conversations from the very beginning. So, we do have a meeting scheduled on November 2nd, and we have another meeting scheduled on November 16th. So, essentially, I'm proposing we push the first reading back two weeks, and then the second reading back will be pushed back two more weeks after that. So, I want to put that proposal out to the committee and get some feedback on that.
Are you proposing that subcommittee, policy subcommittee reconvene and meet again between now and the next? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think after seeing the proposed changes that came from the subcommittee, and then again, seeing the proposed edits to that, or the reframing of some of that language that came from outside council, I think there's enough, there's not enough alignment between those two, those two sources to say that we're prepared to do a first reading that is consistent with what we need to do with our policies and protecting the liabilities of the school administration and the district.
I think that that's fair. I'm fine to meet again with Michelle, but I think I'd love, personally, I'd love some feedback from you and Rich. You know, Michelle and I met together, but I'd love some feedback and your thoughts on the change, the proposed changes and the, the actual changes after.
So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, Rob, is that, okay, so, with the student transportation, there are some revisions, but that's something more I would see as a larger discussion versus just the policy committee meeting to make those change, to adjust that, unless you're saying that the policy committee needs to meet with the attorney to then hash out some of the differences, because I really don't see much of an issue with some of the changes that were provided.
For the transportation policy.
For the transportation policy. I mean, I see some, it opening up, from a domestic, from a divorce attorney's perspective, some of the language, I think, opens up, makes it broader than what we were trying to make it tighter. So, you know, that's something that I think, in having a larger discussion, we should be able to tighten up. So, I'm not really seeing that much benefit necessarily in delaying it, because it might be just a word or two that could be changed off of that if we have that discussion now.
In all fairness, I do see his point about Brent as well, though, because Brent isn't here. So, you know, I'll go with, I'm fine with doing whatever you all think.
My original intent was to table both policies, so that you could take the comments back. I am perfectly comfortable saying we separate those two things and have this discussion about the policies individually. If you feel like, based on the work that you did as a subcommittee around the transportation policy, if you feel like there is enough alignment and it's, you know, small edits to get Dan Brown, our outside council, in alignment with the policy that you, that you guys put forward to us, then I'm happy to have the discussion with, well, Brent, like I said, he didn't send me an email that outlined why he wanted to be a part of the conversation on both policies. But again, he's not able to join us. That's how our committee works. So, if we want to separate the two of them, I'm happy to do that. I just wanted to throw it out there that it, that it may just be more effective to do them both, pushing them out two weeks.
So, my question of that is, if in two weeks, another board member is out, are we, what are we going to do at that point?
I think at that point, the subcommittee would at least have the chance to fully interpret outside councils, excuse me, councils, proposed changes or revised language that came into us again this morning. And I just don't think, I personally, I've read it twice through. I understand the language in both policies. I, you know, I have thoughts on the language in both, in, you know, in both versions of the policies. I don't know if we've really had a chance to discuss it, or the subcommittee has had a chance to discuss it without having had a meeting. So, I think that that's the difference. Two weeks from now, you as a subcommittee would have had a chance to review the changes in more depth and work together as a subcommittee to figure out which edits you wanted to incorporate, which things you felt very strongly about your policy, and put that forward to the rest of the committee.
I would offer that, I appreciate the what-if, if something happened the next meeting, but I think the two conditions that compel me for the next meeting is that we do have some major edits from our legal counsel, which are major edits, I think that should be digested by a policy committee to help advise us in full, full, complete understanding for... full, complete understanding for both policies. I think it's the wisest thing to do. We always try, I think that's the ultimate effort of the policy committee, is to make an effort and try to put enough and bake in enough time to do our creative work or our opinion work, or whatever we do as, as community parents and members, and then add it to the, the legal as well before we come to the first reading. So I think we have an opportunity here that we probably should follow through, and we also have an opportunity to bring Brent in line. I mean, that's what I think. And the, the rewrites are enough by the attorney, and we just, we did just get him this morning. So I think it would be wise to, you know, one more meeting. And just tease out, you, you made, you made an interesting point using your own professional perspective, that there might be a little bit of word teasing out, so maybe that can be teased out and finalized. Not even as a question of two different approaches, but it becomes one thoughtful approach put together.
So then it means that it's just not a meeting with the policy committee, it's a meeting with policy committee and council.
I think that's a possibility, sure. Yeah, I, I would, yeah. I, I think that's possible.
If you feel that's necessary, yes.
If you feel, you have council's opinion, right?
We have council's opinion, and that's where, you know, we can differ from the council's opinion, but I'm just trying to be as efficient as possible. Because what I don't want to see is we, you know, with the student transportation, that it's, we're going months on trying to figure out what to do when we have students that are affected by this. And I'm always looking at, you know, the point behind the policy is to provide transportation and ensure that children aren't on transportation for too long of a timeframe. So that's just my concern of just keep kind of pushing it out. So what I don't want to have is us have a discussion two weeks from now, that then need to go back to the attorney to have that approved, and then come back for a true first reading. Because every time you make a major change, it's another reading. So that's just trying to kind of figure out. And so it's kind of, yeah, I mean, we, we can, the policy committee can meet again. If there's any, I'd almost like to hear if there's any major concerns that the rest of the committee have that want us to address with council. That's where I'm kind of hesitant, because it's like, we can go back to the council to, and look at this and, and talk about it, but if there's other information that we, you want us to try to address, that would be helpful to know.
Yes.
Michelle, can I say one comment, though?
Yeah.
Even if there are major reworks between your first reading and your second, it does not require to go to a third. Once you've read the first one, if you make a rewrite at that time and changes, it's just a draft forward for a final.
Okay.
So, just to give the public a time between the two meetings, as well as yourself time.
And I, and what works in our favor is that we do have our next two meetings, we don't have a long gap between these two meetings. We have two weeks before the next meeting and two weeks before, you know, and then we have a month gap, right? Because we have the Thanksgiving break. So again, it's a two-week policy. I, I also just want to throw out there, yes, you know, our goal of our, of our policies is student transportation, but the goal of our policy also is to protect the school district from any type of risk. And we just, there, there are two sides to it.
I understand.
We all do it for the safety of the children and the safety of our entire community, but we also have to look at this as far as what's, what protects our district from any type of liability.
Any additional liability, yeah. There's always going to be liability.
Do we need a motion to waive, waive this agenda item, or do we just pass on? What do we need?
My understanding is that we actually do need to have a motion to, since it was on the published agenda, we should have, we do need a motion and a vote to defer it to discussion at a later date.
So I'd like to do that, I mean.
Can I just interject for a second? I guess maybe I'm missing something here. We, can we have a discussion and get any feedback right now? Or are you saying we, we don't have any discussion, we wait and talk about it?
As we haven't done the first, we, we can't have the discussion until we've had the first reading.
I, I think I'm on the same page with Michelle. If we read it today, we can have a discussion about it next week, correct? Where all of us will be.
But my question is going to be, which policy are you going to have a first reading of?
The transportation.
So we can certainly vote, I mean, we can certainly, again, I, again, I, I was trying to lump them together because I honestly did not want to look like we were trying to do one thing for one policy and one thing for another. Just full transparency, right? I wanted us to have a full discussion for the entire committee, if they were possibly present, and because it was two weeks.
There were, there were greater changes on the mask policies, so I think that it would be smart. I know, I hear what you're saying, but I think breaking them up might make sense because, like Michelle said, there's fewer changes on transportation. It's, it's language, and we can go back to subcommittee, we can talk about masks, we can touch on, but I hear what you're saying, I think.
So what I would ask you then is, which of the two policies that have been put before us, the one from the subcommittee or the one from outside council, are we going to do the first reading of?
I'm okay with doing first reading with what the outside council provided. And then I can provide an explanation as to why I think something, some wording should be put back in or some version of it. And happy to work with Dan Brown on that to see what, but I, I think, I would like to hear feedback from at least the two of you from that, so that if we're going to, if we're going to make that connection, that we have all that information. And so we're not going back more times to council, because every time we do that, it's, you know, it can delay the process, but also I'm sure that there's some sort of cost on that as well. Trying, just trying to be as efficient as possible on that.
I agree.
And it cuts two weeks out of the potential process of moving forward with it.
And I'm, I agree. I think we should separate the two policies and address the transportation tonight and address the mass, the changes that we made, or the bulk of the changes we made to the mass policy was just to make sure that we, when and if the mandate is lifted.
Stop.
Oh, sorry.
Just talk about, just talk about the transportation.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't, we cannot discuss the policy unless we've done the first reading of it.
Okay.
So we'll get a chance for you to, to talk about the rest of it when we do have that first reading.
Okay, understood. So I think it's, it might be smart to separate them and do the first reading of transportation tonight.
Okay, so what I'm going to propose now is that we do the first reading of the student transportation policy. Richard.
I, I would say if, if, if there's agreement to separate them, I think you should make a motion to separate them, and then that, it makes your agenda item nice and clean.
Okay.
So your agenda item is for two policies, so I think your motion would be to waive the first reading of the face mask policy until the next meeting on November 2nd.
Okay, so thank you. May I have a motion to waive the, to waive the reading of the, of the mask policy until?
Yes, I'd like to waive the reading of file EBCFA, the face mask policy. I would like to waive it and read it on the next meeting.
Are we really waiving it, or are we just delaying it?
Tabling it.
Delaying it, postponing, I think, is the.
We're tabling it until the next meeting.
Postponing it to a date that is determined, which is the important piece.
I would second that.
Until, until the next meeting, which is November 2nd.
Well, that's what, that's what your motion was, till the next meeting.
Yes, until the next meeting on November 2nd.
I would second that.
All in favor? All against?
Great.
Thank you. So moving on to the first reading of policy EEA, the student transportation policy.
You want to split it?
Yes, please. Why don't you take the first, I'll take the second half.
Sure. So this is the student transportation policy. It is file EEA. It is the intent of the Foxborough School Committee to comply with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the regulations of the Registry of Motor Vehicles, and the Department of Education pertinent to transportation of students. Those laws and regulations govern any areas not covered by specific declarations of policy, and they shall supersede the policy in the event of conflict. Eligibility. All kindergarten students, all students in grade one through 12 who live more than one mile from the school assigned will be entitled to transportation privileges. Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry, this one's super small. I brought my glasses, but I'm going to do the best I can. Okay. Safe school practice. Kindergarten students will not be dropped off at the designated bus stop unless there is a caregiver to receive the student. If no caregiver is present, then the child will be returned to the child's school, and the parent guardians will be responsible to pick up the child. Kindergarten students during the first week of school will wear bus name tags to and from school. Bus drivers will check for bus name tags and compare to route sheets. Parents are prohibited from boarding school buses. The Foxborough Public School District uses security cameras, which record both video and audio on school buses to ensure the safety of students. They may be used in any area inside and surrounding the bus where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. Students identified on security cameras in violation of school district policies will be subject to appropriate disciplinary, disciplinary action in accordance with the disciplinary procedures set forth in the student and staff handbooks. Violators of the law may be referred to law enforcement agencies, and video evidence may be provided to those agencies by the superintendent. Student expectations. The school bus is an extension of the school community. Student behavior expectations and responsibilities will be subject to appropriate disciplinary action in accordance with the disciplinary procedures set forth in the student handbook. A. In consultation and support with the building principal, the driver is responsible for discipline on their bus. Students are responsible for obeying all instructions of the bus driver. B. In the event of an infraction of rules, the driver may be reprimanded, may reprimand the offending student. There's a strikeout on C, but in the event of a more serious infraction, the driver must report the offending students to the school principal or assistant principal for further disciplinary action using the bus conduct report. At no time are students to be put off the bus while en route. If in the, if in the opinion of the driver, one or more students are acting in such a manner as to jeopardize the safety of the bus, the driver may return students to the school. A suspension of transportation privileges may only be made by the super, the school administrator. Administration of the program. A. It is the intention of the Foxborough Schools to design routes that maximize safety and efficiency and minimize the amount of time a child will be on the bus. Bus routes will be established in August each school year, and parents will be notified through local media outlets. B. The superintendent of schools is responsible for the execution of the transportation policy and regulation adopted to implement safety. The school department assumes no responsibilities for the safety, conduct, or discipline of students while waiting at bus stops or on their way to or from stops. C. Parents and students are reminded that pickup, sorry, that pickup drop-off times are estimated times. On any given day, the bus may be delayed due to traffic, weather, or other conditions. A 10-minute allowance either way is to be expected. D. It is important that students be out at the bus stop waiting for the school bus. Do you want me to keep going?
I, you want me to take over?
Bus, well, I'll, I'll, I'll read this one, and then I'm going to have you take over. Bus routes and stops. The guidelines for determining bus routes and stops will be, one, distance from school, two, distance an eligible student will be required to walk to a stop, three, grade of student to be serviced, four, safety of the street. Bus routes are established under the direction of the superintendent designee in order to provide authorized bus stops within a reasonable walking distance of the home of every student entitled to transportation. In no case will the walking distance exceed the eligibility requirement. Elementary bus stops will be at or near the homes of kindergarten students on these routes. Pickup and/or drop-off at every kindergarten student's home is not guaranteed. It is the parent legal guardian's responsibility to notify transportation, the transportation supervisor, a minimum of two weeks prior to the start of the school year if the student's regularly scheduled stop is different from that associated with the home address. All requested pickup and drop-off locations must be within the student's assigned school district. Parents may request with a minimum of one week's prior written notice a change of pickup or drop-off location, only if said location is on the same bus route the student was assigned to. Exception to the same bus route and, and school district requirements, requirements for elementary-age students who attend before or after-school programs at the YMCA in Foxborough. Centralized bus stop locations will be utilized whenever possible to reduce bus route mileage and time. They will be located in such a manner which will not require students to walk an unreasonable distance. Middle and high school students may be, may be required to walk further distances than the, than the elementary school students. It is safe, if safety is an issue along the bus route for a walker, eligibility to ride the bus will be reviewed by the transportation supervisor, bus administrator, or the superintendent.
I think that's business administrator.
I'm sorry. See? Good stuff.
I can, I can start.
If you can, that'd be great.
Sure. Home is defined as a legal residence of the student, which may include two legal residences within the town of Foxborough. In a shared, court-ordered, physical custody situation, a student may have two legal residences. In order for a student to qualify for transportation from to two residences in a shared custody situation, the following requirements must be met. Both residences must be within the town of Foxborough, and if the student is enrolled in elementary school, then both residents must be within the same elementary school district to qualify for transportation. Parents slash guardians must provide documentation of a court-ordered or filed with the court impending court approval, shared physical custody, and a parenting arrangement. The arrangement must provide for a fixed, regularly reoccurring schedule for when the student will be at which residence. The only allowed changes to the pickup and drop-off locations must be detailed in a new court-ordered, filed parenting plan, and the school district must have a minimum of one month's notice prior to implementing any changes. The parents' guardians must provide a copy of the parenting arrangement slash schedule, which shall be filed with or ordered by the probate and family court. Both parents slash guardians shall comply with proof of residency requirements. All other requirements in this policy must be met as well. Responsibility of school bus drivers. School bus drivers are assigned the full responsibility of safety of students while riding to and from school, and have full authority over the bus and its passengers en route to and from school and/or other activities, and during loading and unloading of vehicles. A. The driver is responsible for inspection of their vehicle before starting and at the conclusion of their route. This includes a visual circle check of the vehicle, tires, general condition cleanliness, and safety of equipment. Drivers are required to adhere to all school department rules and regulations. I'm sorry, that's B. Drivers are required to adhere to all school department rules and regulations. Number one, the only purpose of operating school buses is to transport students. Students have responsibility for their behavior and attitude towards drivers, and drivers are to be, are to have a positive attitude towards students. Two, punctuality. Routes, schedules, and arrival and dismissal times have been established. Drivers are to follow the rule, follow the routes and to be at each stop at the same time each day. They should not arrive at individual schools before scheduled times. Three, entering and leaving school areas, drivers are to enter and leave schools at a safe operating speed and to maintain a safe operating distance between vehicles. When several buses are proceeding along the same road at the same time, drivers are to main safe, maintain safe operating distances between vehicles. Four, drivers may not transport their own children on buses unless they are entitled to transportation privileges, privileges per existing policy. Legal references. MGL 4571, 7A, BNC 7137D, 7148A, 7168, 7171A, 71B4, 71B5, 71B8, 748A, 761, 7612BI. Wow, that's small. 7614. Cross-reference. EEAA walkers and riders policy, do I need to go through all the policy adoptions and reviews?
No.
Okay, so I think that that, that ends it there. And thank you, everyone who's been listening. We appreciate your patience. That is a mouthful. So do you want me to kind of go and?
I do. Yes, please.
More on that? Okay. So, you know, this was in response to kind of the question that was out there about, we have two parents, and I'm going to use that- we have two parents, and I'm gonna use that to include guardians as well so we can kind of cut down on the verbiage. Two parents who both have custody and extensive parenting arrangements with their children and both live within Foxborough and both qualify for bus privileges, that they can utilize that. Because one of the things that was brought to our attention, and I'm sure that they're not the only family, families that have that, is the children have two homes. And right now, how the policy really stands is that they have to kind of choose which home that they're gonna get bus privileges from. And one of the things that, you know, we were looking at is how much time are the children, when they're doing that, really winding up spending trying to get to and from school? How many transitions do those children have on a daily or weekly basis? Not having the ability to go to the home that they're spending that time with during the week really increases the amount of transitions. And so, trying to kind of formulate something to allow that to happen. And I just, I wanted to point out a couple of things because in looking at it, you might find what, you know, why typically you would say, okay, it needs to be a shared custodial arrangement that has been court-ordered. Unfortunately, right now, we have cases where people have signed agreements that have been filed with the court, and they've been sitting there for a year, and they have not been approved yet because the probate and family court is very far behind. So, that is the reason why that language of being filed with the court was added in. Because it's kind of, you're not gonna, trying to cut down administration who are kind of dealing with this, cut down on them having to deal with that. My concern, and that's what I'm happy to talk with Attorney Brown on, is the terminology "physical custody." That's really verbiage that's gonna be harder and harder to find because more and more couples and parents are having, are not utilizing the terminology "physical custody." The courts are going away from that. They're really looking at more what the parental arrangement is. And so, that's kind of language that we can probably try and work out, something that encompasses that. Because you, I think that that would be a little confusing on trying to figure out when you don't, when you don't have, you have joint legal custody but not any reference to who has physical custody. And it's really more about how much time the children are spending with each parent. I know that when we met with administration, one of the concerns was for the elementary schools, buses are really going within that elementary school district. And so, having, you know, if one of the parents is outside of that, that would actually have to be a bus that would be specifically really set up a totally different route. And that, at this point, is, seems to be just not reasonable with what we're dealing with at this point in time. And so, that is why it's different for elementary schools versus middle school and high school. Okay? I think I covered those areas.
Okay. Thank you. Richard, any questions or?
I don't, obviously, if there's language that's need clarity between physical custody and joint custody and all that stuff, I guess that should be clarified with advice of counsel and yourself as well.
Right. So, the only place I'm, just a quick glance, the only place I'm seeing reference to physical custody is, I just found the second one. See? I need, I need the reading glasses, too.
Right.
These are, the progressives aren't strong enough, I guess. I need their reading ones.
It's a little, it's a little small. Yeah.
Okay. I just found the second one. So, I see two references to physical custody.
Right. And that's part of why I, I had kind of added in is that it's a parenting arrangement that provides where parents are with, you know, one, for both parents to have the children two or more school days each week or an alternating weekly pattern. So, it's really talking about how this, what doesn't really qualify here is, you know, where one parent might have the children one day a week. That becomes a lot more onerous, I think, onerous for the school busing system versus a true situation where the children are with each parent for approximately 50% of the time. That's what we're really trying to encompass here, where they have two residences. And so, just, I, I'm sure we can button up the language.
Okay. So, based on what you just said, so thank you for sharing that. There are two different types of references to physical custody. One in the top paragraph on, on, in, you know, Home Is Defined, and then one in Section B in that same, where the first one just says, "In a shared court-ordered physical custody," and we want to change that language potentially.
Right.
The second one, in Section B, "Parents/Guardians must provide documentation of a shared or have court ordered file but a shared physical custody and a parenting arrangement." Is how it reads right now. So, but what I heard you say is that we don't see physical custody being declared as much, if that's the right word.
Mm-hmm.
But there are parenting arrangements. So, is that, is that statement actually now possible in these cases? Because you just, are we doing, do the courts do shared custody and a parent arrangement? Or is it one or the other?
What they do is legal custody, which is where the parents are making decisions regarding educational and religious and medical. That's typically joint. And then, you may have language that's joint physical custody, but more likely what they're saying is, it might say something along the lines of, "And the parenting arrangement will be X."
Okay.
And so, that's where, what I was trying to do is define what that parenting arrangement would likely look like, at least have that. And so, that's where I'm happy to talk with Attorney Brown to, to figure out. Because it was more like, here's what the definition of that is, so that to give guidance to both administration, who are trying to interpret this, as well as parents, who are trying to say, "Do I qualify or not?" So, we just want to kind of tighten that language up a little bit.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add, though, I appreciate what you're saying and I understand, but I, I'm not sure we need to define the parenting arrangement as a minimum with two. I mean, I, I think allowing, allowing the words to stay in, joint physical, parenting arrangement, let it be. And whatever the parenting arrangement and custody situation is, I don't, I don't know why you have to define it to be 50% or two or more or something.
Just keep it a little bit easier and less cumbersome for transportation. Like Michelle was saying, like, say there were some families where it was just like a, a, a rolling schedule or something like, like that, or like one day a week and then, and then all the rest of the days. You're right. I, I mean, maybe we don't need to define it, but we were just trying to get as specific as we could to, to make it a little bit easier.
Yeah, I would say it's the slippery slope situation of like, just making sure that we're trying to accommodate situations where it, each parent has approximately, it could be a 60/40, a 50/50, but not a situation where there's one day every two weeks, and now that's not a pattern. Because we also have to look at the enforcement of this, especially in elementary schools. High school students, we expect that they're gonna get on the right bus and they're gonna figure out, we expect. I know, there's, there may be, but elementary school teaches.
Ray, how you do with that? So far, so good? Okay.
Okay. You know, and, and high school students who are on, you know, shared parenting plans and so forth and arrangements, they're gonna know, okay, I need, I'm going to dad's tonight, I'm going to mom's tonight. They're gonna know that. They're gonna have schedules, they're gonna have all of that. Elementary school students, it's a little bit more difficult, so there needs to be a pattern for teachers, bus drivers, parents, and students to be able to ensure that that child is getting on the right bus. And that's a lot of administrative type of work to ensure that. So, that's part of where we want to make sure that this is not too broad and putting too much pressure on the system, but still, at the same time, meeting parents and students' needs. So, it's a balance.
Thank you. Mr. Youth, now head.
I think too. So, I was gonna offer, I understand, and I appreciate your, your thoughts, but that's, I believe it's your interpretation that there should be this plan, and we don't want to be cumbersome for administration, and we don't want it to be onerous. I think we can allow administration to deal with this. If it's a one out of, if it happens to be one day a week, because it's a very unique situation, but it's the same day every week, that's, that might be a possibility. I think, I don't, I'm not sure we have to restrict it. Just my opinion.
Mr. Youth.
So, I, I'm not in disagreement with the policy change, but I am going to tell you that what you are doing is putting the onus on the teachers and the principals because they're the ones who load the buses and put the students on the right buses every time. And, and the reality is, a lot of things happen here, as I said to the subcommittee. Mondays, you know, Monday holidays, people forget that it's a Monday holiday, thinking it's a Monday on a Tuesday, put the kid on the wrong bus, kid goes the wrong place. Nobody's there. Remember, we only look for parents on kindergarten and first grade, so we're not looking for a second, third, fourth grade parent. And even, I'm sure the middle school would say the same thing. When you look at the fifth and sixth grade, there's some that this could be very challenging, too. We don't, on the middle school, put the children on the bus, the kids go to their own buses. So, in a younger fifth grader who may get confused, we are going to have kids going to the wrong place. We are going to be dropping them off, and then they're gonna be someplace that they shouldn't be, and there's nothing we can do about it because we don't know. So, you're taking on, the whole reason that this policy is troublesome to the district is you are now taking on a different liability base. I truly understand the two legal residences. I, I don't argue that issue. But you are truly putting the school district into a position of responsibility that is very, very challenging. We've had issues in the past. I've personally had to go to houses where kids were at the wrong place to find the child. We have kids gone home to the wrong place and been scared to death hiding behind their house, waiting for somebody to come home. We've just had too many issues with this with a simple system. And this can be a complicated change that you're going to make. And again, you know, you've got your, your principal sitting here right now. I'm sure they're not looking for one more added piece of, did we make it right or did we do it wrong? So, I just want you to also keep that into consideration in your, in your votes on this because that's where you're shifting this responsibility to. It's gone from the parent now to the, the schools.
And I know I conveyed in that as well is that, you know, parents need, parents in these situations need to work really hard with their kids and make sure that they know where they're going, that they have the tools available if they're gonna be utilizing this. Because it, you know, it is, it's something different. And not to just expect that a fourth grader is gonna remember that it's Tuesday, is, you know, remind him Tuesday, this is what bus are going on, that kind of thing. And I remind, I, you know, when my kids were little, I, I had a little card that was laminated as like, Monday, you go here, Tuesday, you go to the Y, this is what happens. So, it, it is, and that's part of the reason why we're trying to, to make it as tight as we can so that it doesn't get to be too much.
Thank you.
One more comment. The, the other thing is that it has to be, and I think, I appreciate what the subcommittee has done to a degree, what the council has done, but the reason that the schedule has to be extremely locked is because I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen, and it happens to us now with parents. And that is, oh, we're taking a vacation, our kids are gonna stay someplace else. So, think about this in the dual-family one. My husband's taking next week off, so the child's not going there on Thursday and Friday. That's gonna happen. So, now you're again having a, a change in the schedule that's going to happen, and they're gonna be very upset with us if we say, well, that's too bad, we're still dropping them off on Thursday and Friday at your husband's house. You have to make arrangements to be there, which is the way that we would expect it to be, but depending on how you write this, that's going to be one of the things that will come back to you.
I, I got, can you, can you explain something else to me? Maybe I just, I'm really missing something. Did the old policy allow people to be dropped off in two different spots?
No.
So, how did it happen, then? You just said to me, you went to a house with someone.
A kid was supposed to stay for.
Stay after school.
Stay for extended day.
Oh, okay.
It's a Tuesday, the kid didn't realize it, got on the bus and went home.
Okay, okay.
So, we have those type of things that, that have happened in the past, just in a, in a general sense.
Got it.
And it's, that, I'll tell you, if you wanna lose your heart, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
It sinks real quick when you're trying to figure out where a child might be. Those are in a situation that we, you know.
Yep.
Normally could manage and should manage, and now you're adding this to it.
Yeah, I, I got it now. So, I was, I was kind of confused. I was like, wait a second, they couldn't have done it. So, so it was, it was more the mistake of they were supposed to do one thing and they did the opposite.
Right.
And the opposite was their norm.
And sometimes, we had one just the other day where a kid told the, you know, the teacher that they were told to go home and do such and such. And, and as much as we say things are supposed to be in writing and stuff, unfortunately, the kid was trusted and the kid went to the wrong place. Went home, shouldn't have. So, I, I understand what you're saying about the kids should know, should be, you know, the parents should kind of prep them and stuff, but kids are kids.
So, Bill, one of the things that I saw that was different in here, and that's one question that I had, was Attorney Brown had added in that there needed to be a minimum one-month notice prior to implementation of any changes under this provision. But then, further up, it says, "Parents may request with a minimum of one week's prior notice a change of pick up or, or drop off location so long as it's the same bus route that's been assigned."
Yeah. What's, what's been allowed is a, a parent, let's say, has some kind of conflict, they know it's coming up, maybe they, they have court, they have jury duty. So, they know they have to leave on a Monday morning that they wouldn't normally have, they'd normally be home. If they give us notice of that in advance, but that they're gonna have the child picked up on the same bus route but at a different stop for that particular time, we've allowed that. It's, it's, again, it's no, it's no confusion other than it's, it's stop A versus stop B. And that's, you know, how we're looking at, or dropping off at stop B versus stop A.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments around the policy or any of the things we've discussed this evening?
I do have one question. It's not about specific wording. Have we had a dialogue as a committee about why we're revisiting the face mask policy? So, I thought, I thought.
But we're talking about transportation right now.
Wait, wait, we're talking about transportation.
Sorry, okay, sorry. You just said, you just said anything else this evening.
Oh, no, I missed.
I'm into this policy. I'm sorry.
Got it. Never mind.
You're jumping again.
I'll fail that comment. I'll fail the comment for a minute.
I thought I missed something there for a second.
Well, I didn't, when you said the receiving, I was like, okay, I guess that's the agenda.
Yeah, no, no, I meant around the revisions to the transportation policy.
Right.
No?
No. I mean, we'll, we'll work on kind of tightening that up and come back with some additional revisions. I don't expect them to be major from what we have and what we read tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to approve this? We know we're not doing anything.
We don't vote on it.
Yeah, we haven't voted yet because we haven't, so, thank you very much.
Under this topic item, may I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman, now?
Please.
Obviously, I'm gonna just repeat what I just said. So, have we had a discussion as a committee? I, I thought we discussed when we put, when we discussed this policy originally months ago, we talked we would revisit the policy when necessary, and I don't recall another discussion at committee level about revisiting the face mask policy.
We did last, last session.
We did what?
We talked about how we wanted to bring it back up at this one.
I think the way I read the minutes to that was that in the other information section, there was a request to discuss the mask policy. I think that my, based on, again, I wasn't at the meeting, my understanding of the minutes, my interpretation was, we were going to do what we had planned back in August, which was revisit the policy on a monthly basis in our, not, not to revise the policy, but to understand where we were with the policy as compared to where we were under the state's mandate and those guidelines. So, I think that's where my confusion came in. I had assumed that, maybe I had missed the discussion around why we were revisiting the policy. So, I guess my question would be the same as yours, Richard, in this case, is why are we revisiting this policy at this point? What is the compelling event requiring us to revisit that policy?
Some of the aspects about our policy don't match what DESE is, policy, and that's where some of the revisions have come in, where some of them is more stringent, less stringent, or just the language in it. If you look at it, one of the things, you know, is that.
Don't read the language.
There are things that. There are things that the policy says cannot happen that are happening, because it's in line with the, with DESI.
Okay.
So that needs to be, even if, if DESI continues, extends, that needs to be changed, because they're not, they're not matching.
Okay, so, following that line, does it make more sense then to only look at the pieces of our policy that are not in alignment with DESI versus some of these other things that are, that are in the policy now with the suggested revisions, that are additional and outside of the DESI policy?
Wait, are you talking about these masks? We can't tackle that, right?
I'm just asking about the, the policies, the policy in general. If the intent was to bring it, is to review it to bring it to align with the DESI policy, because what Michelle just said is there's, there's misalignment, then is that the only language that we should be looking at, then, for this first reading? Is, is the language that brings it into alignment with the DESI policy? Because that was the logic of why we're revisiting it.
I thought the subcommittee could revisit a policy at any point in time if someone requested it on the committee, because Michelle had requested it last meeting, that we revisit the policy, that we look at it and make sure we're aligned with DESI, but also aligned with the, the culture, and I, I don't remember-
Right, and, and print it as well, I mean, that was where-
Which is, which I, I say, fair interpretation. I think we need to be careful with any of our policies, that we assume that what we hear is the culture, because it's not. What we hear is a subset of the culture.
I meant in general.
Okay. But that, so just in general, if there's a compelling event to revisit the policy, then we should revisit the policy. If, again, misalignment, makes perfect sense to me. If there are things that we're trying to do with the policy, because again, they provide, they expose us to additional liability, then we should be doing that as well, right? My interpretation of what we do as a, as a, as a committee and as subcommittees, is that we need to stay in alignment with the mandates and the guidelines that are sent down from the state. That is our primary function. So that's how I would be looking at the, all of these policies when we wanna revisit them. Are they in alignment, not with the feelings of the community at the time, but with the guidelines that we have to follow, and the liabilities that we're trying to avoid or protect ourselves from, excuse me.
Sure. I think that that's part of the motivation of us meeting, was just to make sure Foxborough's sort of protected, because if anything should happen, DESI changed things, you know, if things change on a dime, we wanna be prepared for that with the policy.
Okay.
Fair enough.
In interpretation, yes.
So, I just think that we should have a discussion about it. You know, we've, we've heard a lot from people that are here, from outside, and I don't see any harm with us having discussions as to what we might, what the opinions are, how we wanted to deal with face masks in the future. So I'm a little confused, because we don't wanna read it, but then we're kind of talking about it, so are we talking about it or are we not?
To me, it's a procedural thing, and, and I thank you, Richard, for bringing it up. I do think if we just want to discuss outside of the policy, face masks, or any other protocols within our schools, we can do that carefully within the context of the meeting, as long as it's a stated agenda item. The agenda item tonight is the first reading of the policy, right? So, which is why we shouldn't be having a discussion around the specifics of what's in the policy, because we want to realign based on the feedback we got from outside council. If we want to have a discussion, like we do with a teaching and learning highlight, or a superintendent update around the upcoming MCAS update, we can certainly have a discussion about that as a committee, but we do need to have it on the agenda, and we do need to make, do need to make sure that we are tightly defined with what we're trying to accomplish with that discussion. That's my opinion.
And that's what I, I had assumed when we had the conversation at the last meeting, that that's what was gonna be on the agenda, not just a reading of a policy.
Okay. So what I'm making a note of then, is that we wanna consider having a general discussion around face masks at some upcoming meeting. We also want to have an agenda item potentially around proposed revisions to the current face mask policy, depending on what the subcommittee decides with, with this discussion, as well as taking into account what outside council has provided to us.
So I'd say at the next meeting, let's have a discussion about it.
Okay. So what we need to do is look at all the, I'm not saying no, but I think we have to look at what all the agenda items are and say, does this fit into where we are? I'm not saying no, but I think, just from a protocol standpoint, we propose things that we wanna see on a future agenda. If this makes sense to have it at that meeting, it sounds like it does. I just want us to, again, if we're gonna start doing it this way, we need to be careful that we don't say we're gonna do this one this time and this one the next time, we have to-
Well, since we already voted that we're moving, delaying the face mask policy to the next meeting, then we should have also on the agenda a discussion about it.
Well, you might, I just, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm coming, I'm not trying to be difficult. What you might say in that case is, we should have a discussion at the next meeting, then the subcommittee might wanna take that information, along with all the information already gathered, go back and do a revision that we then present at the following meeting, as far as, if we feel like coming out of that discussion, we still wanna revisit the policy. Unless, again, in my opinion, my opinion only, the only revisions we're going to propose to the policy are the ones that bring us back into alignment with the DESI policy, with the DESI mandate. Because I think that one becomes, we have to do that because of our requirements as a school district. I would be comfortable with a first reading of the policy that only does that at the next meeting. If we, if we're going to have a discussion about, if we, if we want to put face masks on the agenda for the next meeting as just a general discussion topic, I do not think that it is right to have that discussion on the same night that we also read proposed changes that are more focused on our culture, if you will, and only focused on things, we should only be focusing on things that are part of, going back to what you first said, the reason we need to do this is because there's misalignment with DESI. So if that is the case, the only thing that we should be talking about without having a committee discussion is those proposed changes.
You mean a larger committee discussion?
Yes.
That's correct, that's-
That's fine, I mean, then, the point is, is to have the discussion.
Okay.
And to ensure that whatever, that the policy that we're having our administration enforce is in line with what DESI is at that point in time, recognizing that those, between now and the next time we meet, there's gonna be potentially changes. I mean, that's-
Yes.
Part of what I see as an issue here is, it's like, there's trying to keep things-
It's not an issue. We have a policy that, that, again, protects us, it's an opportunity revisit, because we had an event that requires us to revisit, but it's not an issue. The policy is in place, and will stay in place until we've chosen to revisit it, but it's not an issue. It doesn't create a gap, it doesn't expose us to additional liability.
I'm not going to respond to that, because I don't wanna open us up to additional liability by responding to that.
Okay.
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 So I, I just say that we need to address, address, have a discussion about the mask policy, and have a first reading, so that we're in line with what we have that's coming down from DESI.
Okay.
Okay? So, trying to kinda keep going along the liability stream and not address that further.
So, so if I may just clarify what I was, what I was really trying to be clear about, and, and I'm not saying we totally missed it. So, alls I was just saying is that we do our best, the five of us, to collaborate and bring our, bring our wisdom to the table at any given moment, that's what we try to do. And at the last meeting, Brent was very specific about, he asked the policy subcommittee to do something, which was review EEA, right? That was crystal clear. And there have been mentions about mask policy, so we know the mention of it. So I was just referencing back in my mind to where we have collaborated together, which was always committing to this community and this public that we would revise and be, I, in my opinion, I'll use the words revise and be aware of and be cognizant of mask policies going forward. That's, that's, that's where I was at in my mind, okay? So that's all I'm asking for. So I, I think my, my question was how we arrived at a previous dialogue of we're gonna be aware of and revise and be cognizant to a, a possible first reading of something. And so that, that was just my question. I, I don't think there was intent or any, any ill will at all, but I was just, I think when, and I do believe, probably with all due respect, the policy subcommittee has opportunity to do different things as a policy subcommittee, I respect that as well, too. Respect it, absolutely agree with that. But in general, we have functioned very efficiently by, you know, stepping where we stepped to together as a unit. And so I, I thought it was, my, my observation was that we hadn't had the discussion about getting to first reading level of something, where it was crystal clear that, and I've said something about the transportation policy myself at the last meeting, that I believe we should revisit it. So that, that's all I'm acknowledging. And it's, it's a complex policy, and it's, it's something that's important to our community, so that's, I'm just, it was more about procedure and how we do our very strongest and best to collaborate as a unit. That's where I was kinda going.
That's really important.
So, and that's all, and I don't think there was ill will or anything, I just, I would have prob, me, I would have approached it a little slower, and been a little, you know, paused, for a brief moment. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Grace, you wanna weigh in?
No.
I'm sorry, I won't leave you alone until you actually say something out loud, so.
Okay.
So moving on to the next agenda item, Dr. Mello, the multi-tiered system of support.
Yes, I feel a little bad, I was remiss in when we introduced the teaching and learning highlight, I was a little thrown by the lack of slides, which was actually my fault, I sent Mike Weber the wrong slides. So I didn't really introduce them in the frame of our multi-tiered system of supports, and what you heard about was one of those levels, and, and our data teams. So we are actually, I think your slides might be in sort of reverse order, so you might have to go to the middle of your packet until you see that particular photo there. The first part's review, so we can make up a little bit of time. As we mentioned earlier, our focus is on teaching and learning, particularly my job, that's curriculum and instruction and assessment is where we live, and we have been on this journey to up our game a little bit in the area of multi-tiered system of supports, and I, I wanna refresh where we were with RTI. But the, the graphic on the screen talks about tier one, tier two, and tier three, and we haven't talked a lot about that at this table. Tier one is all students, universal supports that happen within the context of the classroom, and making sure that we have the most accessibility to learning for all students by providing things in different modalities. That's called universal design for learning, that's where that lives. Tier two, as we talked about at a data meeting, might be like looking at some data and thinking about, okay, where could we offer some more targeted support? That might end up in a student support team meeting, and then tier three is more intensive level of support. So those are the basic tiers of multi-tiered systems. So we are on a journey that's going to be a three-year journey. We mentioned at the last time that we talked about this at school committee, that Igo School and Taylor School are part of the DESI MTSS Academy, so with that, we get three years of ongoing training, support, resources, and it's really a great collaborative experience for us. So we're not where we were, but it's not, it's going to be a little bit before we actually get where our final destination is, but it is a, a very active work in progress. So where we've been, and again, this is review, we learned about response to intervention, which was really avoiding a wait-to-fail model, seeing where students were, providing interventions. We all learned about that as a district, and then each school went back and sort of implemented their own systems. There was some overlap between those systems, but they weren't necessarily consistent. So the language wasn't consistent at the school, and the way things were executed weren't, wasn't exactly the same, which made it challenging for parents moving between levels, for teachers who are having cross-grade level, across-school meetings, or even if a student moved from one cha, from one school to the next. So our goal is to get consistent with that. The other thing with MTSS that is different from RTI, it's the whole child, so we're thinking about our social skills, our emotional skills, our behavioral skills, and our academics, because we know that those things impact academic achievement. So we really look at all of those factors, and thinking about the whole child really allows us to, to dig into some areas that we may not have looked as closely before. So where we are headed is to having a consistent, I'm having clicker issues tonight, a consistent strategy of support, so student support team, PLCs, professional learning communities, which again, we had these, but they really didn't maybe look the same or have the same focus at each level or in each department, data teams, and building-based support teams. So I wanna just dig a little bit into those. Micah, yeah, thank you. We showed some of this at a previous meeting, but I wanted to enhance it just a little bit, so that you can see what's been done over the last couple of years and where we continue to go. So in the 2019, 2020 school year before we closed, we did a complete revision of our D cap, which is our district curriculum accommodation plan. That's something that all teachers have, they can provide accommodations to any student that would live in that tier one level. We also had professional development on universal design for learning. We talk a lot about our professional development and building capacity of our teachers, and we launched that D cap with this sort of enhanced lens for teachers on universal design. And we had some additional staff days that we revisited those topics at each building and each level, because they had their own unique systems. Last year, obviously, we had a different type of year, but we, we implemented the D cap, but it was a little bit more spotty, given the situation we were in with our hybrid model. We applied to the DESI Academy, we were accepted at the end of the year for that academy, and with that, we formed a new multi-tiered system of supports working group. So I just wanna say that that group started meeting in June, because we knew that we were going to have to have a plan coming into this year for students who had interrupted learning. So there's always been a plan, and we've always been working on it, and what's happening now is what you saw in the teaching and learning highlight, is what does that plan look like when it's executed? And it's execute, that was the elementary example, it looks a little different at the middle school, and it looks a little different at the high school. And again, it's not gonna be today what it's going to be three years from now, but it's all in motion. So this year, we've continued that work of the multi-tiered system of supports working group. We just had our big district launch on the October 8th professional development day, and we gave a refresher on the D cap, because last year was unusual. We wanted to make sure that we had it updated and that it was in everyone's hands, and that everybody remembered why it was there, and used it as a resource. We implemented new universal screening tools, one is coming in the next couple of weeks. It's a social-emotional health screener, we've heard a lot at these meetings about the social-emotional well-being of our students. So we'll have an instrument that we will use to actually collect data on that, so that we can really look at students through that lens that's quantitative as well as qualitative. We also have a new universal screener, that's really focused on literacy, but it's designed to target dyslexia early, but beyond the early stages, we are also looking for other discrepancies in the literacy continuum, those have been implemented this year, and we've started our work with the DESI MTSS Academy. So I just wanted to highlight, our opening day PD in August was really focused on thinking about our commitment to all students, and knowing that every student is a study of one, and every student has a unique story, and it's our job to understand where they are and what they need, so that we can provide it to them. So these are some tweets that some of our teachers sent out from those professional development days. We had two different speakers, Dr. Adolf Brown and Mr. Ken Williams. Ken Williams talks about starting with the crown, and that is about all students have to get to a certain level, all students. What do they need to know and master and be able to do before they can move on to the next grade level? What's not negotiable? He refers to that as the crown. You'll see a lot of tweets coming from Foxborough Public School teachers about starting with the crown, and you'll see crowns up in classrooms, and it's really a great metaphor that has resonated with people about every student, see, I don't know if you see that quote on the left, above the head of every student, Foxborough School staff holds a crown, they challenge students to grow tall enough to wear, all students, not some, all. Dr. Brown really talks about students carrying two backpacks, the one we see and the one we don't see, and we need to unpack what's in that second backpack, that invisible backpack, so that they're available to learn. And that is our lever for equity. So all of our conversations about MTSS really are underpinned by the idea of equity and excellence for all of our students. And it was exciting to see teachers feeling so passionate about it, many teachers said it was the best professional development experience of their career that they had that day. Dr. Brown, as a side note, will be coming to join our middle and high school students in November, because his message was so incredibly powerful, that we heard from staff, that they would love the inspiration to come to students from them. would love the inspiration to come to students from them. Oh, if we can go back one more mic, sorry. Is that the one? Yeah, there we go, the next one. So we talk about, um, the multi-tiered system of supports. In Foxborough, we have a lot of data, as you heard from our, our panel here earlier. And we look at it at different levels for different purposes. So a data team, which is what you heard about here today, that would have specialists at the table, special educators at the table, classroom teachers and curriculum directors, that's really like a 10,000-foot view of the data. What are we looking at? What trends do we see? Are there any shifts that we need to make? That then informs the professional learning community where we're going to bring it down a little bit closer, and we're going to get into grade level specifics in a building. What's happening here? Who's learning? Who's not learning? Who already has it? Who doesn't? And what are we going to do about it? That's what Noel was talking about. What now? What do we do? And then if we drill down to the 100-foot view, that's a specific student. Okay? We have a student who's either making progress way faster than we expected, or they're lagging a little bit. And so what interventions can we provide or what enrichment can we provide so that they can move along in their learning journey? And we put all of our brains together and said, okay, this is what I did on the D cap. I tried these inter, these accommodations. And we said, okay, we're going to try these interventions for four to six weeks, then we're going to come back and check to see, are they effective? Are they not effective? And we monitor that progress and we come back. It is very systematic. It is very intentional and it is very formal and regular. There are forms that we use. We track the data and we really watch the progress of students. And the goal is that you do those interventions, you find the magic bullet and you say, okay, they're moving on. If not, then we come back to them again and say, okay, we're going to try this. If still there's a persistent problem, then they might go to our building-based support team. That's sort of outside the bubble. That's where we convene a bigger team to say, do we need to do further testing here? So what's the purpose of a data team? We really want to think about, um, how do we identify areas of opportunities and growth for our students? We really want the work to inform the professional learning community. So when teachers get to that space, you heard that, time is at a premium. If they're going to be together, they need to be focused and say, okay, we're going to get there. What are the goals? What are we working on? How are we supporting students? So it's, it's taking data, you can be data-rich and information-poor, right? So it's taking the data and then saying, okay, what does this tell us? What doesn't it tell us? And what's our action plan? And as you heard, we have lots of forms of data. So some examples of types of data could be what we're most familiar with, achievement data, and what gets the most press, MCAS data. That's one data point in time. We have a lot of other data. We have things like attendance data. We have, uh, behavioral data. We have our enrollment data, our demographic data, our social emotional data. There's so much data that we're looking at all the time and we want to make meaning of it in the context of the whole child. So some of the assessments that we use, it's not just testing quizzes. Students leave the class many times, there's an exit ticket. We're just doing a quick check-in, maybe one or two questions just to see, did they get what we were teaching today? Do they need more help? Sometimes on those exit tickets, students, and you could probably speak to this, Grace, they might tell us, how do you feel about what you learned? Yeah, does it, is it, did you think it was tricky? Did you think it was easy? That's sometimes more valuable. They may have it right, but if they said, that was really tricky for me, right? And it's great for the teacher to know that piece. So we're looking not just at those assessments where you log on the computer or you sit down, but quick information that we can use in real time. What is the purpose of a PLC? We think about the investment of time, and I have to give credit, um, our, our schools, middle school and high school have a PLC structure that's sort of baked into their schedule. And the elementary schools had a system that they were using, but it wasn't as frequent as we'd like it to be. We'd like this to be once a week. Uh, so there has been some movement to bake it into the schedule, which was a transition for some teachers this year. And we, if we're going to do that, we want to make it valuable to them. So they're meeting regularly to engage in this systematic process, really looking at the data. And they might say, you know what? I tried this in my class and this really worked. And the other teacher might say, okay, I'm going to go, I'm going to go try that tomorrow. They're collaborating, they're sharing strategies. And as Richard pointed out, it's very energizing for them. What do they do there? They really focus on the learning. Who's getting it? Who's not getting it? What are we doing about it? And that really comes from defining those essentials. We have to be clear on what do we expect all students to know and be able to do. With talking about the student support team, it goes back to sort of that crown and thinking about, okay, if this child is either surpassing what we expected or not meeting, what are we doing about it? What are the interventions that we are providing so that we can guide our next steps? Because it's all about every student feeling challenged in the, in the proximal, there's no proximal development and feeling they're having their needs met. This came out from the Department of Ed this year as a tool, it's called the Acceleration Roadmap, as in a tool to really support districts in dealing with unfinished learning. So they have phases that they've outlined. And I think even if we didn't have this tool as a reference, this actually aligned perfectly with the plan that we already had in place because we started to do this work before this document actually formally came out. So you notice there are three components, sense of belonging for students, transitioning back to school full-time, the sense of belonging, it's probably more important than ever in re-acclimating students to that, monitoring their understanding, and then providing strong instruction. So those are really our three charges. And so for each phase along the way, they've outlined some steps. So diagnostic testing, those are those universal screeners that we talked about, making sure that we get that data early and that we are responding to it immediately, um, creating an, an assessment calendar so that we know when we're assessing next, and having the professional development to support it. We had done all of those things and we continue to do those things. The launch phase is really making sure that we, um, we, we check, are kids coming to school? You know, are they here? Do they feel like they're part of the community? We're so fortunate that we have great systems in place. We have responsive classroom at the elementary level. We have the web program at the middle school and we have the link crew. You heard last meeting, there were some enhancements even added this year. I know Ms. Myers-Peck talked about what they did for freshman students. So there's a very, um, visible effort. Those are visible things that you can see about belonging. We support teachers to run the first cycles of data-informed instruction. That's what you saw tonight for our teaching and learning highlight. And we are communicating this to teachers in a way that is allowing them to get up to speed that, that feels like, okay, I can absorb this with, with different chunks of professional development and easing their way into this process. In phase three, which we're moving into starting next month, is thinking about our goals, making sure on, everyone understands these tiers and how they can access all the supports that are available. And then at the end of the year, we will reflect and see what changes we need to make. But one of the key differences, I think, in coming off of a pandemic and that was in this acceleration roadmap is I think we've heard the term remediation often in education. There's been a lot of research into remediation and the process of remediation. Technically, what that involves is going backwards. We're going to go back and look at what students don't know and we're going to try to reteach it. And we know with a pretty significant span of interrupted schooling, that model would likely put students in a spot where they wouldn't be able to come back from it because you'd have to keep going back. I mean, students haven't had a regular school environment since, for a couple of years now. So this model of acceleration is really focusing on being strategic. So I'm going to take a math perspective because that's the one I know the best. If I'm about to teach proportional reasoning, my students really need to have an understanding of fractions, I'm going to stop and say, did they get that last year? What did the data show me from last year? If I know I have students who don't have that, I'm going to build that in before I start this unit for a mini lesson, a small group, a workstation, something to make sure that they can then access the curriculum. So I'm teeing up those most important things, those essentials, making sure they have them without losing time. And that is the strategy that we have been taking. Now, we prioritized our standards last year, so we're in decent shape, but of course, there's going to be things that need to be fortified. So that's where the focus of our discussion has been. Oops. That one went really fast. Wow.
I have a few batteries.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, something. I know, poor Mike's trying to help me in there. So our focus has been, has continued to be on, as we look at acceleration, it's on those essentials, it's on planning, and it's on urgency. We came right out of the gate with professional development and we started these meetings in September. This isn't something we sort of admired from afar and said, oh, I guess we're going to get to that. No, we need to do it now. So having those essentials defined is, it's in our standards, but you can't just go by the standards because not all standards are created equal. So those discussions are having, are happening now. Is it 100% done at each grade level? No, but that is our work and that is what we are focused on, is those essentials. And we are doing it urgently so that we can make sure that students have what they need. I think I'm, there we go. So this is just a snapshot of our elementary calendar, since you had elementary here this evening. And I know there's a lot on there. You can see our teachers are busy and they're involved in a lot of meetings. But you can see in the, where it says ELA, those are those PLCs and those grade level times that they are together. You can see where it says math, although we didn't actually end up doing it this way because we needed to flip-flop some things, but it would be the math meeting. And then those data team meetings. And in there in blue, you can't really see on the eighth and on the 29th, those are our MTSS committee meetings. So the, the focus on this has been very intense because we want to make sure that we're using the time we have with students this year. We appreciate it. I think they do too, so much more, that we want to make sure that we don't waste a single second. So with that, uh, we are going to transition and talk about MCAS, but I'm going to take a breath. I tried to make up a little time. I know I talked fast and there's a lot there. So please feel free to ask me anything that you'd like. I know it was a lot and I did talk fast.
I'm sitting here, I, I'm thinking to myself, you just flew through something that is so deep. So, so I, I totally understand why you did it and I appreciate the time saver.
Well, we can go back to any slides. Is there any?
No, no, I know we can, but I, I guess I was just going to say that, uh, this work is so deep and rich and valuable. Um, it's, it's sometimes not even seen by the average person in many ways. It's, it's, uh, it's just incredibly valuable work that really digs deep. So you did a very fast presentation on something that is so vital to what, what, what our core is, uh, in, in reaching every kid.
And something that's actually consuming quite a bit of time.
Yeah.
From the summer meetings to the fall, after-school meetings to the during-school meetings, and the preparation for the meetings and the preparation for the professional development. It is a lot, and I appreciate your point about it not being visible. And that was sort of the thought here was to make it more visible because there is a lot that goes on that people don't know about.
I thought it was really nice as soon as you engaged Grace. Oh, Grace, do you know about that? Right away, she, she knew and the kids knew. The students know. And that was wonderful because that's what really matters.
Yes.
Right on.
Yeah. You have questions, Grace?
I'm not really a question, but I can definitely already see most of this stuff already happening, like in classes, like what you said, the check-ins. We've definitely been receiving those and most of this stuff was like familiar sounding to me.
That's great. Glad to hear that.
Bravo.
Thank you. So it is seen.
Yes.
So we've just been proven that it is seen.
By our most important client, yes.
Student just identified it, so I was wrong.
That's a perfect example of why it is so, I think crucial to have student representatives come to, um, come to these meetings because we're kind of seeing it from one perspective, but getting a student's perspective is really helpful. So thank, thanks.
You came at the exact right moment. Other questions or thoughts?
Thank you so much. Let's move on to the next one. We'll stay, we'll stay with you, Dr. Mello.
It's so much, it really is.
I read, I read through before.
So the next phase is really to talk about the MCAS results. And I think that, um, we really wanted to take the opportunity to sort of slow down a little bit and put the, our results in context because they were, they were gathered during a very unique school year. So this was the slide, I, I think we might have, I think you might have mentioned this at the last school committee meeting. For students in grade seven, their last normal school year was grade four. And when we think about that and the disruptions that students like Grace have experienced of the last time, Grace, was a normal school year for you. What grade were you in?
I was in like sixth grade.
Yeah. And now you're in high school.
Yeah.
Right? So the middle school experience got sort of like, I don't even know, like not glossed up. Yeah, hijacked is a great word. And now you find yourself in high school, right? So when we think about the MCAS, um, it wasn't administered in 2020 because we were closed. So that would normally be the first time for our third graders to take it, so they didn't get that. So then the, this year, it was the third and fourth graders taking it for the first time. It was administered during a hybrid learning model. And we know, we said it all year last year, there's no substitute for in-person classroom learning with a teacher. And so we would expect the results would not be as strong as they typically are. I think we'd be concerned if they were because we know that our teachers, the research even shows the teacher is the determining factor, right? So we weren't really surprised, but I think I have some good news here for us tonight because the, the news, the piece that made it into the news was the state results and the drops that we saw. We know that MCAS is a snapshot of one moment in time. And we, you just saw, we have a lot of other data to look at, but it is important to look at ourselves in the context of our peers across the state. So just some key differences. It was pre, it was different than any previous test administration, and I did touch upon this at the last school committee meeting, but I wanted to be a little more specific. So typically, an MCAS session, um, has multiple parts. This time, the kids only participated in one session. In Foxborough, they might have participated in session one, but in Sharon, they might have participated in session two. It was randomly selected. So when you're comparing town to town, it's not even really comparing apples and apples. And I think that's a really important thing to understand when we look at the data. Because of this, well, actually, there's a few more up there. So the duration of the test, um, it was shorter because they didn't have as many subtests to take. The testing window was opened up, so some kids could have taken it in May and some kids could have taken it in June. So you think about the difference in the instructional time and the amount of curriculum that could be addressed in that time, that would impact the results. The testing conditions were different because some students were taking it in school and some students were taking it remotely. About 20% of students in the state did take it remotely.
About many.
Yes. And the growth calculation metric was also changed because of the issues with the test. So I'll get into a little bit more of that later. Because of all of those inconsistencies, the Department of Ed said, we cannot, uh, give out accountability ratings this year. It wouldn't be fair. We, we can't do that. So they put a hold on those. And it was, as you know, not used for the competency determination of the class of 2022. They'd given us a lot of literature on the breakdown of the competency determination, but everything on that slide is really to say that, like, we just had to look at, how did they do in math in ELA as opposed to actually having to take that? Now, students could take that if they wanted to be eligible for scholarships, which you talked about last year. So they could have had option one, they could have earned a passing score, but option two was really completing the relevant high school course with a passing score. We look at the class of 2023, um, they're changing the metrics a little bit. So because that median score came down, option one is to earn a specific score in ELA or math. And option two is a slightly lower score, but also fulfilling the requirements of an educational proficiency plan. Something they've always had in place, just the threshold of the score has changed. In terms of the science test, because it's a test, it's a biology exam that students could take at a different point. We don't have data for that last year. The next class that will have to do that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Myers-Peckla, I believe is the class of 24, correct? And I think that's what that says on that slide, but there is a lot of information there. So again, what was new in 2021, this is just basically review. But just so you do know, the three to eight random assignment of the test sessions applied to ELA, math, and science. Science MCAS is only happening in grades five and eight at those levels. There's that stat, about 20% of the students took the test remotely. We were one of only six states who allowed for that provision. Test administrators monitored the administration from afar, but obviously, the conditions were different. In grade 10 remained a two-session in-school test. Because it was, for those students who wanted to take it for the scholarship, they needed to keep it the same. The SGP, which is the student growth percentile, was calculated using multiple years of data. It did reduce the median, which I will show you on the parent report, which is coming up next. The parent report was redesigned to really help parents understand what do these unique results mean? Because they're not the same as what you would have read before. So they have some little icons on there to sort of help you through it. And I'm actually going to skip right ahead to those. So this is the parent guardian report. And there's some animation on here. Mike, there we go. So there's some little hints that they put on, and I know they're small. But the first red arrow says, the dashed line below shows the range of likely scores your child would receive if they took the test multiple times. So normally, that dashed line might have three dots on the side of it. This time, it has many more. And that is because there were so many variables with the test. If they took it in June, it would be different than if they took it in May. If they took session two, it might be different than session one. So they had to allow for more variability there. So the message there is, don't hang your hat just on that score. Because if it was any given different day, it could have been pretty significantly lower or pretty significantly higher, because there were a lot of variables. And that's where that second arrow is pointing. Below the other two red arrows, the one on the left is the current score. They do show, if your child had a previous test administration, what the score was in 2019. And then on the other one is the growth percentile, showing the state average for that grade level. So that you can see your child's growth in relation to the state. That being said, if you have a third or a fourth grader, there are no growth scores because they haven't taken the test before. On this one, there are some really nice notes for parents. Students took one half of a regular test. Some students took session one, some took session two, as I noted. That is probably the most important, which is why I think they made it bold and put it at the top with a big exclamation point. Information about your child's achievement in this report should be used alongside other assessments, such as school tests and classroom work when possible. Because MCAS is just one day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to see what you're doing all the time in real time. Let's see. So these are the graphs that the state put out. So a lot of people have seen these. The only thing I want to take a moment to note on these is what that blue solid line means. So what you're looking at is ELA compared to 2019, which the state has already said, you really shouldn't compare for all the reasons we already said, but they did anyway.
They were ready for it.
Yeah. So that blue line that's in the middle of the orange bars is really to show, where did the green line need to begin? So the blue part is exceeding expectations. The green is meeting. The orange is partially meeting and the red is not meeting. So we can see that there was a slide a little bit, and this is the state again, in ELA. About 4.7% for grade three, 5.8% for grade eight. And it really is, again, just to show, whoops, sorry, Mike, the students who were previously meeting expectations. This is the graph that they, the table that they released that showed the difference and the decline. Everything that is a decline is shown in red. Anything that's an increase is in green. Interestingly enough, ELA, grade 10, the state, they went up in meeting and exceeding expectations. There's a lot of hypotheses about that. Students spent a lot of time on their own, having to read, write, and speak. So those proficiencies may have increased potentially. But again, that's 2019 to 2021. The next slide is us, Foxborough Public Schools, 2021 Foxborough compared to 2021 state. Because that's something you can compare. Because, well, I say that with a grain of salt. We still don't know session one, session two. But I think it's a more fair comparison than 2019. So where we saw some drop off on those state scores in almost every grade level, we didn't really see that in our English Language Arts across our grades. So going down the side there, grades three through eight, and then grade 10. You can see in each of those grades, Foxborough performed over the state in terms of the outcomes in those categories. So for, if we went all the way to the right, the exceeding, we were 15% and the state was nine. So we were over by 6%. And we look at the meeting, Foxborough and meeting the state, and I'm looking at third graders here who have never taken this test and haven't had a normal school year, probably like ever. They were over by 5%. When we look at the categories where students were below, we had fewer students below and that's why those are in green. Does that make sense? I know it made sense in my brain when I was putting it together, but it makes sense to all of you. Okay. The other point here is, all students are now on a computer-based test. The last time we presented to the school committee on baselines and benchmarks, it was the high school, not science. It was their first time with the new MCAS. They had previously had the legacy. So everyone now is on a computer-based assessment. I just wanted to share the sample questions because I think you heard in the teaching and learning highlight that there's a lot of reading that's involved. And you're going to see the math questions look very similar. There's a lot of reading even on the math side of the house. So these tests, they have kids having to scroll. They have them having to compare passages sometimes, do a lot of reading. I'd love to hear your thoughts on this after we finish talking about it. There's a lot of demand here. They have to have tech skills. They also, you know, that one is a drag and drop. And they have to be able to read and understand what they're doing. These are rigorous questions. This is not the MCAS it used to be 10, 15 years ago. When we look at math, you can see the discrepancy is greater across the state. I think that was highly advertised and shared on the news. When we look at our third graders, excuse me, the third graders in the state, you can see that drop of 12%. It's bigger, obviously, on the math side than on the ELA side. When we looked, again, this table was made public. And I think it gave people a lot of pause to see double-digit drops in almost every grade for the state. So we were very curious to see, did we have those double-digit drops in our data as well? And what does our data look like and what is it telling us? We saw that while we did have some decline, understandably, our drops were not nearly as significant as what we saw in the state. So we continue, there's one spot there on eighth grade in the partially meeting, where we saw we had more students in that category than the state. Otherwise, the differences were pretty negligible or they were double digits in the positives. So we were happy to see that. We still do look at the item analysis and say, okay, are there certain things we need to do for acceleration? But again, keeping it in context of what it was. It's not the typical useful information that it is. So this is a sample question in math. There are multiple parts to the questions. Students have to use the math tool, the calculator there. Sometimes they have to drag and drop on a graph. Or that one is a sliding scale. That's a grade three question on the right. But they have to read all those parts and then use a drag and drop to be able to share their solution. What's great is being one-to-one. They're building their technology skills like they never have before. We also use a computer-based assessment in most grades, so they do have experience with that. For science, as we shared before, we're only reporting on grades five and eight. As a reminder, the fifth grade science MCAS is reflective of the content in grades three, four, and five. And the eighth grade is reflective of the content of six, seven, and eight. That has always been one of the biggest challenges of the science MCAS. They say that they're moving towards a performance-based test, which I think would be much more appropriate. But I don't really see how they're going to do it. So again, if you look at those questions, you can see they're very language-heavy. There is some interactivity with the platform that students have to use, multiple parts again. And while we don't want, you know, 6% of our eighth graders not meeting expectations, we're glad it didn't drop as much as we saw again at the state level. And I think so much of that comes from the model that we use and our instructional model that we had for students. And we were really fortunate to keep our students engaged with their learning. So Grace, do you want to add anything about MCAS?
Well, I mean, mostly what you were saying about like how it's all mostly about, like you need to be able to process their reading, that I think was very, very true. Because on all three of our tests that we took last year, there was always an open response question where you had to read an article and you had to write like a whole essay about it. So I do, yeah.
And having that, yeah. Yeah, and you're a perfect person to have here because you were in eighth grade and you got to do, well, you got to do all three.
Got to do.
Got to do, yeah. I thought about that after I said that, you know. So does anybody have any questions about, I did try to go a little slower. There's a lot of information there.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question because I was just looking, it seems like eighth grade. And I'm trying to determine whether because things were circled is what's drawing my eye to it or if it's, you know, because, but for both the ELA and the math, it seemed like that partially meeting is, has one of the negative numbers.
Correct. And when you looked at the state level too, you saw a pretty significant drop in eighth grade. I think the reason that they're circled is because you know they're leaving the middle school environment. So that data for eighth grade for us is particularly informative before they go off to high school in terms of making sure they get the interventions through the MTSS that they need.
And I was just thinking about how, if you're saying, okay, that's really eighth grade is that cumulative effect of the learning. And they had only half of seventh grade and then all of eighth grade having been affected.
Right.
Are there any other reasons why you're thinking that those are kind of like the eighth grade seems to be more affected in that group, that partially meeting group?
I don't think so. I can tell you at the state level, we saw more students go from meeting to not meeting. They did a double jump.
Okay.
For our kids, it was more of a...
If they're going to slide, they slid.
Right. For us, it was more of a single jump. And again, we don't know how close they are to meeting because on any given day, it could swing. So that's why having our PLCs and our data team is so important to say, okay, what are the screeners we did right now? What is this in real time that we know they can do? And where do they actually need intervention? Because this test, as we know, is not the most reliable data based on all the variables that we said. So we're trying to give much more controlled assessments where we understand what the data means and then can intervene properly. But that's a really good question.
I think it's interesting too, to remind ourselves at the state level, when you're looking at that, we were, the majority of us in hybrid learning models, if not some places fully remote. But even the hybrid learning models that districts were in varied greatly across the state. So there's so many variables that come into this.
Right. It's almost too many variables to get any real useful data out of it.
Exactly.
Because there's so many different experiences that students were having at that particular point in time. And if I remember, it was just a time when we were integrating off of hybrid as well into full-time. And that's a big transition.
And I think that's why there was such a push by, a vocal push by many people not to have the test.
Correct.
Last year, because they didn't think it would yield usable data. Yeah.
Okay.
I had a grade 10 question. Did the lowered score in the EPP make a real difference for the juniors? Well, the current junior's 23, right? They're the 23 class. Is that, did that make a critical difference or?
I don't, I actually, no. You don't think so, Ms. Myers-Peckla? No.
Interesting, interesting.
There's so few students that fall into that category, generally speaking, anyway.
Well, I kind of thought that too. So I didn't, I didn't know what kind of relief that was. And I mean, it looked, it looked bold, but I'm not, I don't know if it was. It was about 18 points or something like that. So I don't know if that was massive or not, but I just wasn't sure.
No, it's a good question.
Sarah, Grace?
Thank you.
So my only question is going to be some of Michelle's, which was, what do you do with it? Like this is, the data here seems so, I don't want to say it's unreliable, but there's, there's so many variables.
Yeah.
That what do you actually do with it?
Right.
Right? So we, you know, we'd already planned the multi-tiered system of support, which is, should be addressing some of the things that we think might be gaps. But is there really anything in this that you think is actionable outside of what you would normally be doing?
The only thing that, from like a curriculum director's perspective that you would look at is to say, we prioritized certain standards last year. How did we do on those standards that we know we spent more time on? And are there any of those priorities, standards, like the essentials, that maybe a sixth grader is moving to seventh grade and they don't have mastery? We might not see that. We might see that in the trend, then we'd go to our own data to say, is that really real? And then how are we planning for that? Because we know they need that skill to move on. But really, that's basically it. I mean, the definition of validity and reliability are undone by what is presented here. So, but that's a good question.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
That was a lot, so thank you.
Actually, there was, I was trying to formulate it, sorry, I needed a minute there. Any concerns kind of based on this is like, okay, so the students now that are 10th graders now that will be taking the MCAS this year, making sure that they have the supports and preps and all of that to kind of get them through because they need it for the graduation requirement? Are there any different steps that you're taking or kind of looking at?
I think everything we just heard about with MTSS, that is all the stuff. And really bringing the teams together with a more clearly defined purpose and really making sure we're responding to that data in real time. So it's really, those supports and those tiers are all about intervention. So you intervene when you see there's an issue in the data. So that's what I would see happening is in those department meetings and particularly in those tested areas, is really drilling down to those pieces that they need. Because one thing we do know is the 10th grade test is really designed for students to be successful as a competency determination. And so we want, I know the state wants people to do well on that. So they do release a blueprint of this percent of questions is going to be on this domain and this. So it really helps people to focus the attention on those areas based on the data that we have. I wouldn't say really out of the MCAS data though. I think our internal data is much more valuable.
Right. Because it really, you know, in looking at it is from a student's perspective and, you know, they haven't had, they might have taken MCAS last year, but they haven't had the buildup to kind of prep and have that practice as much as in years past.
Exactly.
So it has a different, I'm sure it would have a different feel as well as potentially more anxiety on some of the students' parts than otherwise would normally have.
Right. And I think that's a really great point about why we try to engage in computer-based testing. We have some, I was just talking at the middle school today about this. And there's been discussion in our grade one, which I know probably sounds to us like grade one. But there's been some discussion about when is the right time to expose them to a computer-based testing? Because they've shown us, they do have some skills, right? But we want to make sure that when we do that, it's a test of the content and not of their technology skills. And they're not there right now. But having them build that muscle over time through our own assessments that are computer-based will help them be more prepared and giving them the same level of rigor. So I think we've been doing that for a while. I think we're just more cognizant of the value of it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We get a break now, I think.
There you go.
So next on the agenda is Dr. Burdo, some for you, around proposed substitute pay rates.
So we came to you.
Thank you, principals. Thank you, principals for being here.
We came to you a couple of years ago on increases for our substitute teachers. And we have different tiers depending on how long they're here and their qualifications. For instance, if they're retired teachers, et cetera. We've also had a number of conversations here when we look at minimum wage and how that's increasing. And we need to go back and revisit. It is very difficult to get subs right now. And then at the same time, when we have somebody that might be out for medical leave or extended leave and having someone to come in, we want the continuity of the same person to be able to have the quality there. So we needed to look back at our sub rates and to see where we were in order to keep subs and not have them go to other places. But at the same time, really think about what we are doing in reference to even minimum wage, et cetera. So I'll turn it over to Bill.
Yeah, so current minimum wage is $13.50. It goes to 1420 on January 1st. That dictated basically the first change with the subs that would be for a daily sub with no degree. To keep that above the minimum wage, we would move it from 90 to 95 and move the 16-day and after from 95 to 100. The, the real point here is that, you know, as Dr. Burdo said, we need subs, but we want as highly qualified subs as we can possibly have. And in order to do that, you're really trying to push as much as you can for people that have, you know, advanced education with more degrees and if at all possible, somebody who has a teaching certificate, right? So one of the problems is that, you know, what we found in some of the districts around us is that they're, for certified teachers that want to be subs, their rates were higher than ours and some were lower than ours. But the reality is, I think, we're best serving the students if we put a little bit more money into the certified teacher lines to try to attract them to come in. So that's why it's kind of a larger jump there from 110 to 130 a day. And I think that's, you know, still when you look at it, that's basically a $20 an hour position. It's not something that teachers typically would be making. A starting teacher in the district right now is $43.08 an hour. That's our bachelor first step, or second step, actually. So, you know, you can see it's really not even kind of comparable with the first step. Most of these retired teachers would be teachers that would have gone out near the top of the scale and making considerably more. But we want to make it at least something that if they're willing to come back a day or two here and there, it's a little bit more reasonable and we attract them versus letting them go someplace else. The intermediate substitutes, that's typically a sub that basically is with us anywhere from two weeks to 90 days. All right? So we know if somebody goes out on a pregnancy leave or, you know, a longer duration, but it's not a one-day thing. And basically, that was at 170 for all intermediates. What I'm saying is we should split that into intermediates that are non-certified teachers and intermediates that are certified teachers and pay a little bit more for the intermediates that are certified teachers. Again, that would put them at... Again, that would put them at a $30.77 versus the $26.15. And then our long-term sub, which is anybody that's 90 days or more, basically is our first step in the contract's hourly rate. And again, you know, so that's going to go up by whatever our COLA percentage is each year, so that's why that's changing in this schedule. It's the increase from last year to this year in the base schedule. So that's why this really has to be visited almost every year, because you're changing certain ones based on that. So I don't think this is going to end the issue of enough substitutes, but I really do think it makes us extremely competitive. And with the amount of days that we do have teachers out, whether they're personal days, sick days, you know, even some professional days, the better the qualified teacher that we can put in that room, the better the experience is for the child. So I would ask that you basically adopt these for, as of 11-1, because obviously we're just taking the vote now, to move forward and, again, revisit them each year as you go forward.
How much, I was going to say, how much do you anticipate this winding up costing us, and does it fall within the budget as it currently is?
Well, I believe we'll, we can make it through the budget, because we increased the substitute line slightly for this year, which we typically would do anyways, assuming that we're going to have a change. Again, I don't think we're going to get, you know, 100 qualified certified teachers that are going to walk in the door tomorrow and say, okay, we're going to do this. So I don't see it as a huge adjustment to the budget. I think it's within what the budget can handle this year. But again, that all depends on how many days I have teachers out from, you know, whether it's sick days or whatever, so.
Understood.
If we had qualified teachers for every single one, and we had five out for a year, would be, I'd say we had no problem, but if, you know, we had qualified teachers and we had 500 out, there's a difference, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Joe.
Just a comment. The minimum wage, it says $14.20 for January 1st, 2022. It's $14.25 for Massachusetts beginning that day.
Okay.
Type, that's different.
The $14.20 is the federal.
I was saying the state one.
Yeah, okay. Good point, Joe.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we do need to vote on this this evening?
Yes, you typically take a vote on these.
Would anyone like to propose a motion to vote on the proposed substitute pay rate changes?
I propose that we vote on the proposed substitute pay rates as provided before us.
Effective 11-1. Thank you, second? Richard, thank you. All in favor? Four zero zero. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the October 1st enrollment update. I assume that's Dr. Burdo.
Yes. So the October 1st is, three times a year we have to submit that. That is important for us as far as when we look at funding and all kinds of other things that come to be. It's, I've given you really more specifics. We're staying very consistent, difference of about 35 students from last year to this year, and I don't have it in front of me as far as the actual number. I turned my pages too many times. 2,494. Can't get the pages to turn here. As far as our state enrollment, then you see any of our students that are out of district placement students as well. So very consistent with where we've been.
Questions? I meant to look this up, and I didn't, from last year. On the out-of-district, is that number, seems to be lower than what we saw last year as of right now.
It is. We've brought back a number of children into programs that we've gotten within the district itself, so.
And that's, and that's part of you heard Mr. Michaelazek talking about all of the district programming and really working to have our programs that meet the needs of students. So if we can have them within their home community, that's the most important placement. So there's a lot of work that's being done to bring students back, and so we have seen some students come back.
That's great. That's great news. So yeah, I just, like I said, I meant to pull it out, and I didn't get a chance, but I did, and the number seemed a little bit higher from previous year. So thank you so much. Any other, anybody else? Thank you. Grace? Okay. I had to keep, because everybody else is over here, so I want to keep, I want you to know I didn't forget about you, even though I messed up at the beginning, so I feel really guilty about that still.
That's fine.
I'm going to do this next time, too. So, you know, we'll just have Jacob add it to it as well, so hopefully. But anyway, other matters? Anybody want to open up? Mr. Yufna? Any other matters this evening?
No, I don't have any.
Dr. Mellon?
All of a phase, I mentioned that Dr. Brown will be back for students. Ken Williams will also be back with us for our January PD to continue with this work that we're doing around MTSS.
If I can just mention too, I mentioned at the last meeting, the rec pumpkin float is happening. Everything's going really well. I want to say thank you to Julie Foley at St. Mary's. She put out for some volunteers for the confirmation students, so a few, quite a few of our students are coming to help in different capacities. The Foxborough Moms Club has gotten involved, and they're going to be doing some carving, so the event's going to be really fun, and if anybody's interested in volunteering, it should be a fun volunteer opportunity, you can contact me.
Thank you.
Anyway, it looks like a great, a great event, and it's going.
Thank you, and thank you for being a great voice for the rec department. So before we get to Dr. Burdo's, did you have any other matters that you want to, so that was cool? Dr. Burdo's.
So I have two. One, we have a donation that came in for your acceptance, and this is one, like we had actually in our last meeting in memory of Kristin Warias, and it's coming from the field hockey team at Roger Williams University, Ella Place Field Hockey there. And so there's a donation here for $300 from the Roger Williams University Field Hockey Team families, and they would like that to go directly to the Foxborough High School field hockey.
Thank you very much. So do we, do we need to vote to accept that? May I have a motion then to accept that donation?
I, I introduce a motion to accept that donation as provided.
Thank you. Sarah, thank you for the second. So all in favor? Four zero zero, with great gratitude to the Roger Williams community.
And then my other one is, and it's really more so for you, Rob, and then for Brent, because we have our first date for teachers' negotiations, and you're the two representatives for school committee for the teachers, and that is on November the 2nd, and it's at 3:30 in the IGO Media Center. So that will be our first meeting, and then typically, we will start to meet every two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I'm good. Thank you.
Last chance.
I'm okay.
So I have a couple. One, Grace, thank you again for being here. It's wonderful to have you for so many reasons. Second, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge that I think it was a good discussion tonight. This is a little bit of new territory for us, because we, at least by history, we very much followed the agenda, so I do appreciate that we were able to successfully go off the agenda and have a good discussion, so thank you all for that. And then just two others. We mentioned earlier, there is the concert next week, and I don't recall this, but is this the first choral concert that we've had in, did we have one in the spring?
We were not able to have them.
So this is the first choral concert in a long time?
Like since, yes, 18 months more. I don't remember exactly, because it's been so, so long ago. They couldn't even, they had to be 10 feet to be able to sing, and they couldn't sing indoors and just...
It was probably winter of 19 or 20, that, before all this happened, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Been a long time.
So yeah, I mean, I know the orchestra and the band have had, been able to do things, but this is so exciting for the, for all the singers in the, in the community. And with that, I lost the last one. No, there was, there was a flu shot clinic tonight, but we missed it, because we...
They keep having it on the nights that we have the school committee.
Yeah, yes. So anyway, those are, those are my updates, so thank you all very much. If there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
Somebody else like to do the motion?
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the second. All in favor? Thank you. Four zero zero. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.